Okay.
Yep, yep, I've got the staff report.
All right, let's just be a little careful with that one. I talked to Andrew about that, let's not go too far with that. Trust me. Are you guys all set? Good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome you to the planning board this evening. Thank you for indulgence, just a few quick orders of business before we get to our public hearings. Board members, you have an agenda in front of you at this point, and I'll take a motion to approve said agenda. Yes, ma'am.
A public comment, is there anything we can do, move public comments to the beginning? I'd like to move public comment after the beginning.
Do you guys have any objections to that?
No.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the beginning, moving public comments up.
Second.
Like a public hearing.
Yep. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I just have it unanimously. So, I gather someone's here for, it's like to say, to address the board specifically at this point. Hi, Mary.
Hi.
Just identify yourself or direct the record, please.
I'm Mary Walsh. Mary Walsh, the owner of Nantucket Wine and Spirits. And I just wanted to address the board in the hopes of getting some clarity on the parking situation down, you know, in front of my store on the Pleasant Street side of the Stop &amp; Shop development. I know that there was a plan that the board approved back in the process with Stop &amp; Shop, and as it's gone along, a couple of weeks ago, we went to the Traffic Safety Board to request some delineation of the parking situation there, beginning with perhaps timed parking going along Pleasant Street so that people wouldn't just park there all day long, or employees wouldn't park there all day long. And it was also addressed at the board at that time, the situation of the pieces of the two parking spaces that are right at the end there, abutting right at the fire station situation. And at that meeting, I thought it'd be, I thought what I heard was that the board, the Traffic Safety Board voted to, to request that there be some timed parking on those Pleasant Street, Pleasant Street spots, as well as, then they did an onsite visit, which resulted in them definitely saying that they needed to take the one spot by the fire department, which I totally understand for safety issues, for site coming out in any sort of emergencies. And then, so basically, I haven't heard anything further about the timed parking, and then just yesterday, the whole two spaces next to the fire station were delineated for absolutely no parking at all. And I'm just trying to get an idea of, you know, is this something that is just going to continue randomly, or is there any avenue to go to actually have this parking situation, to some degree, what we expected in our lease and in our, in the planning board approval of that area back during the Stop &amp; Shop situation? I just hear it from numerous people while, that, you know, coming up on Pleasant Street, there's no chance for anyone to park there in terms of a business situation. But I'm just basically trying to get some clarity, and hope to get some clarity, as to how or what, or how this would actually work to hopefully have some definitive parking situation over there.
Yeah, go ahead, you've had conversations, so.
I haven't had any conversation since we walked over there yesterday. And I was with the Stop &amp; Shop brass because we were trying to figure out where to put these two very expensive court-ordered trees. And we were standing there, coming up from the meeting, and people from the DPW were painting stripes on the two spaces and putting the no parking signs facing the street instead of facing where they're supposed to, which is sideways to the street. So you couldn't read them anyway. When I asked them who made you do that, they pointed to the fire department. Now, I know Andrew knows more about this process than I do, but apparently, there was an email that went around, said, "Don't do that, put the parking signs in, but we'll see what happens." There was an agreement, apparently, not to stripe it for the moment, take one space. Nobody seemed to know who was doing what, and the DPW was told by their person to stripe the whole thing. But I doubt she told them to put the signs facing the street instead of facing the traffic. So there's a couple of issues over there, but I know that the Stop &amp; Shop brass was very upset about it. That's not what they understood the agreement to be. It was, as Andrew knows, and we all know painfully, who sat on the Stop &amp; Shop, that it was part of the overall parking plan. We included those spaces in their calculation, even though they're in the public right-of-way. Apparently, there was an issue with the Board of Selectmen not taking the spaces yet. I don't know how that fell apart over there, but who knows? So there's a lot of moving parts here, and my goal was to get this out into the public, that craziness goes on and nobody seems to know or take responsibility for what's going on. But the planning board was the one that signed off on the decision. We're the ones that spent months listening to this. We were involved in the litigation, so we can put those two expensive Leland Cypress on Sparks Avenue to settle it. And my objective, Mr. Chairman, was to send a letter asking, "What's going on? Who's got the ball? What agreement are we supposed to be all under when four different people didn't seem to know who was doing what?" And some people hadn't read the email that was, apparently, went around yesterday, saying, "This is where, how to handle it at the moment. Somebody else decided, 'Well, we'll trump everybody and we'll just stripe the whole thing.'" So I have no clue, I was appalled by it, watching them do it and put the stupid signs in the wrong direction. This is what we're paying for as taxpayers, but this is why we sit here every month. So I don't know where we are in this, because as of this morning, there hadn't been any further conversations between the party powers that be, and I don't know what's going on at the moment, but I sympathize with you. They haven't also striped and blocked in the loading zones, so people can clearly see that there's a box for loading. The sign is up now.
Yeah.
But, and then you guys are forced to put in little cones out there in front, so you can get your deliveries.
Because there's no regulating, frankly, the loading zone. I mean, people can just park there.
Park wherever they want. So the cones go in, and then after late, they come, you know, before 3:00, you take the cone. They were there yesterday at 2:00.
And a lot of times, frankly, people just run over them and park there.
Yeah. Or they take them and throw them on the curb.
Yeah.
So, without it being marked and the signs clearly put on there, the sign is also in the wrong place. It's too far back on the space. I don't know what's going on anymore over there. But it's chaos, and hopefully, today, they'll get the other two open, so Pleasant Street, some of the pressure's off of Pleasant, because the other half of the parking is going to be done, hopefully, today or tomorrow. But that's just my soapbox for the moment. Any further movement, or we, do I make a motion to send a letter saying, "What's going on? Should we need to put them back, put one back, do something?" But the planning board signed on this plan, and that's not the plan. Because the Stop &amp; Shop is not happy either. So there you go. Chaos.
Yeah, let's just be real careful about where we go here. We're not crossing into public hearing territory, because I just.
I just want to send a letter, find out what's going on here. Cut it out, guys.
Andrew, can I just ask you, just through you, Mr. Chair. When the public right-of-way space is created by a private entity, is accepted as a gift technically? Or is it, just because it's in the right-of-way, it was already in the layout, that doesn't mean it wasn't a parking space before? So does the town have the right to do this once the process is, you know, the approval is? And, I mean, we haven't had this technically happen, but like Mary's saying, Mid Island doesn't have parking control. It's not downtown, there's nobody walking around with a pad of paper and a piece of chalk. But that's your loading zone now.
Right.
Which was, right?
Not the two spaces that got striped.
Oh.
The spaces that got striped were the ones towards the fire department. The loading zone is behind that.
Behind that.
But they pull in there anyway, and kind of, whatever.
Well, they don't, I'm sure they won't now. And also, I mean, I understand the safety issues, I would never.
The sightline issue.
The sightline issue, but I'm just trying to, when we went before to the Traffic Safety Board, I thought that they voted to do the timed part, you know, said that they, not that they vote, they vote and then it goes to another for final, you know, final whatever, but that they all agreed to vote to try to get the timed parking in there. I mean, even if no one's policing it, I think that might help a little bit, when people see you can. Yeah, more short-term parking. And there was also some question about widening the center line down Pleasant Street, not widening, changing, moving it over a little bit, so that there would be a little more space on, you know, going towards the fire department, where people were parking there, that there would be a little more space on Pleasant Street. And when, when the Traffic Safety Board came down and did sort of an onsite viewing of that area, they came away with yes for timed parking, yes for taking away one space but leaving one, and a good idea to widen that area a bit for safety. So I was just wondering, given the way it's been going, what to expect going forward, or, you know.
Ms. Chairman, I think the process that got us here, I think, raises a number of questions. I mean, I understand the Traffic Safety Committee, or whatever they are, may have some opinions about things, but they're not the final deciding.
No, I do know that.
Right.
But they, they would make, they said they would make that recommendation, and now, and then I haven't heard anything further.
So what seems to be absent here is, you know, some sort of recommendation turned into an instantaneous action without any consultation by the policy boards that typically do oversee this. The public way is overseen by the Board of Selectmen. I don't believe they voted on this at all. I, I see the point about, you know, perhaps the one space closest to the ramp. I'm wondering why it had to be the two.
Right.
Since parking is in pretty short supply in that area.
Correct.
What we had also said is, could we wait and see until the other, till the parking lot is fully functional, and we could gather some data and see how everything is functioning afterwards?
Yep.
Before we start, you know, I understand there's a, the concern about.
It's a short, short season, that, that's what's kind of came up with the traffic safety.
Right. And there could have been some temporary, you know.
Right.
Things installed to deal with the immediate issue. But I think, you know, if you go by there, you'll see that, you know, it's been painted, and it's quite, quite, seems quite permanent. So anyway, you know, with this being raised at the public comment section, I mean, you know, maybe at least at your next meeting, you know, we, we can maybe put together a timeline so you understand what happened here. But I do have some concerns about the process that, that leads to decisions that effectively changed our decision and didn't, weren't reviewed by the Board of Selectmen.
All right, so I, I'm just going to chime in right now. I agree with you, Andrew. I think it's, this is skirting close to almost having to deal with another public hearing, which I really don't want to, quite frankly. But I'm concerned, too, that there's been a number of emails and conversations that have transacted that this entire board hasn't been privileged to at the moment either. Not unsympathetic to what's going on, but I think there's, you know, two, two things have emerged. One is, as you said, there's been a series of decisions that were somehow made on an executive level without consulting any of the appropriate boards where that should have taken place. And that, that is highly problematic in any way, shape, or form. And I think we need, as a board, to begin to get our heads wrapped around exactly what's happened. And I agree with you, too. It's, the, the parking lot itself isn't even fully functional yet, and here we are, already starting to change the venue of things without understanding why that's occurring. So I'm not as quick as to send a letter right now, but I would really appreciate, between now and our next meeting, that one member of this board is to gather as much information as possible, and maybe to the powers that be that made this decision, is they better be prepared to come fully armed back for us, to help us to understand why this is all transacted without coming for the board. Go ahead.
I know we have a Planning Commission meeting on, what, Monday? Seems like I'm meeting something with planning in it every week this month. It's probably too late to, yeah, it probably is, to have a special for 15 minutes. But I don't see why we can't ask Andrew officially to come back with a response as to what the heck is going on. I know Andrew put it much more professionally and succinctly, but at some point, you've got to stand up and say, "What insanity, and whose mind in this store?" Because this stuff shouldn't happen. And, and when all the three guys painting the stripes yesterday pointed at the fire department, they all just went like this, like they were pointing at the hill in Dallas. I mean, this is like fear on the face. I mean, this is crazy stuff. I'm, I'm just, was so taken aback by it. But I'd like formally ask Andrew to find out what happened here, who knew what, when, where, and how we can deal with it best, whether we need to open the Stop &amp; Shop hearing again, I'd rather not. But it does affect our site plan and our decisions, and the off-street parking that we asked, along the parallel parking stuff there.
Right. Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't think there's, there's a need per se to open the hearing. I think the decision is written in such a way as the Stop &amp; Shop has the responsibility to construct the parking as we had shown on the plan, and they did that. If the Selectmen then change the rules and make that parking less, or whatever, that, that's beyond, planning board's control, it's beyond Stop &amp; Shop's control. They did what they were supposed to do. I, I think, again, in terms of process, some of the work, you know, wasn't officially accepted by them. Again, they chose a different path to allow the construction to go forward, which I think, again, I think that should be examined in the future. But, you know, there's, there's, there's a number of different parties to this that I think, you know, we can certainly provide that information for your, for your review in the next meeting.
Have any, have those issues, you know, regarding even the timed parking, gone before the Board of Selectmen, or not?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, yeah, so I was just wondering.
You might want to circle back with Jack Gardner.
Okay.
Because he's sort of the head honcho on traffic safety. And find out if they put a formal recommendation into the Board of Selectmen, and if not, when is that to be expected? Because this is sort of something, before we really get going in the summer, it has to be resolved quickly.
Yeah. I, I, for some reason, thought it was going before the board after that Traffic Safety meeting. And then, as I said, I haven't heard anything, and then just seeing things going on, I just wanted to try to get some clarity on the situation.
So do we.
Anyway, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, we'll keep working on it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, John.
Ms. Walsh, Ms. Walsh? I have a comment. I have pretty good knowledge of rough operations in this town, and eventually, when something has to be done, it goes through the department. The department head makes the decision of what the staffs to do. And there's been a lot of stuff being going on around this town, from the Department of Public Works, doing stuff without permits, they just go ahead and do it. I don't know who gives the order, but it belongs there, and the Board of Selectmen are the, actually, they're the directors for the committee. So that's where it belongs.
Okay.
You might get down Wednesday night and bring it up to them, to them, to find out.
Okay, I will, thank you.
Where that basket is.
Yeah, I appreciate that advice. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Great, thanks. So that's going to be just to our public hearing phase at this point. First thing before us tonight, sorry.
I want a public comment as well. I'm here for public comment as well.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I apologize. I apologize.
I know, I'm sorry. I had the feeling you weren't going to look up again, so I should have popped up earlier. I just identify myself, I'm Patty Rogavane, I'm here for Richmond Great Point Development. We decided to come forward tonight and give you an update of where we are with our process on applying for the 40B site application. We, we understand that you're not the permitting agency, but we'd like you to understand where we are so that you can, as you go forward as a planning board, know what's coming down the pike. We've just retained Bob Engler as a consultant to be a, our sort of point person on putting forward the application. For those of you that know him, I brought a resume from, from him. He's, he's worked in over 180 towns and cities in the Commonwealth, doing just this kind of work. We have full confidence in his capacity to bring this project forward. We also brought with us tonight a preliminary site plan, or conceptual plan of the 40B, and we're letting you know that it will include, and I'm going to be careful to read here, 105 single-family homes on 5,000 and 3,000 square foot lots, and apartment buildings, which total 264 dwelling units, with Studio 1, 2, and 3 bedrooms. So all of that's in this packet, and again, it's not for discussion, but I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else? I'm so sorry. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, we'll move to our public hearings at this point. First one before us is 7716, which is the Valero Road subdivision, 62, 64, 66, and 68 Old South Road. Mr. Armanetti, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, staff members. Dave Armanetti, The Richmond Company Incorporated, here tonight in our capacity as the applicant on behalf of the two Valero entities that own the subject property, also as the groundlessy of the middle five acres of the property. I'll just make some brief remarks. The board has taken this up a few times very briefly in the past year, as we've processed this, albeit slowly and intermittently, and we appreciate the board's support and efforts to grant several continuances, to allow us some more time to figure out where we stand. But at this point, we do want to proceed to finalize the definitive subdivision, and the staff, as is their charge, has proceeded with a technical review. We've received the memo from Mr. Pesci, which as always is thorough, concise, and very reasonable, we think. And we'll be glad to discuss those conditions and recommendations in more detail at the discretion of the board. The only thing I would mention is just to make it clear, because it has been a while since we've discussed this in any substantive way, what we've made clear to the board before, certainly Mr. Vors and Ms. Snell, and to our butters, there really is not an intention here to proceed with the development in any short-term or near-term timeframe. The vast majority of this effort was made to avail the Valeros of the right to preserve the prior RC2 zoning as a zone freeze, and that's really 99% of this effort. We realize we have to go through the technical effort of complying with all the subdivision regulations and all of the technical requirements, which we're glad to do. But we just do want to make it clear for the record, which we have made clear with our neighbors, particularly Nashop, who we've discussed this with repeatedly, that that is still the intent. This is simply being processed as a zone freeze, there's not any near-term development that's suddenly going to be proposed or occur. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any other questions, or proceed to hopefully finalize this in one of your next several meetings. Thank you.
Board members, any questions at this point?
Uh, we had a couple. Did we, well, for one thing, when you say zone freeze, I mean, I actually think that's not a good thing to say publicly, because to me, that would, if I was opposed to it, it would make it appealable, because then there's sort of this, sort of looks like we're not going to look at it as stringently as we would some, you know, a normal submission. Which is, I think, what we ought to do.
Well, I, absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Absolutely, Joe, I mean, this is, you know, showing four lots, you know, as the, as the applicants know, the land is frozen, not the particular subdivision. So the, you know, this, I think that the, having four lots, and they're not, they're not going to be re-subdivided, you know, there's conditions that we would write into the approval at this point, you know, with the understanding that everything could, could change. Our experience with the Frost property, I don't know if you remember that, that there were two plans like this submitted, and then in the end, they came and filed some A&amp;Rs. So the, the assumption that I think, you know, we would build the assumptions into the approval, that, you know, our approval is based on the representation shown before us, you know, that the road for four lots is fine, but with the understanding that any additional redevelopment, or, of which all of these lots would be re-divisible, redeveloped, would open up other considerations. So they would still have to come in with a definitive plan. And again, that definitive plan could look totally different. Because, and, and you're absolutely right here, because freezing this at RC2 is 4,000, I mean, 40 feet of frontage, 5,000 square feet of land, which is completely different than the CN zoning that it's in right now. So.
I understand, but I, I think maybe it wouldn't hold up to a high level of scrutiny, the plans as they are now. Well, no, it is, it is the point.
The, the plans as they are now, serving four lots, if, if they need to be upgraded for that, yes, I think. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that if you're freezing the zoning, it shouldn't make any difference as though if you were going to max this out, as far as what we should have before us.
If they bring a different plan, if they were going to tax the sidewalks in 2016, they would have a different plan.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know, I'm not explaining myself correctly.
That's, well, I mean, the way I see it right now. The way, the way I would see this right now, is they're representing themselves with putting a roadway in with four lots, and the words I'm going to start expecting to hear tonight are they either in full compliance of, of the subdivision control law, if they're requesting waivers at this point. Where we're now beginning to head is that those four lots are four lots, just because there's now a roadway coming in, there's no further subdivision off those four lots.
On a, on a, on an improved road?
Yeah, on an improved road. I, I, and because here you go, RC2 is, is in my mind's eye, a blank slate. Okay? It really is. And we have no idea until we start talking in the next few minutes' worth of time about what that's going to look like. So I hear what Andrew's absolutely 100% on board with this.
Well, remember, this is a preliminary plan, so it's not, it's not buildable after you approve a preliminary plan. They have to follow up with a definitive plan.
It says, it says definitive.
Oh, it's definitive, sorry.
It does say, yeah.
So they have their preliminary, which you already approved, right?
Right.
And so the definitive, you, you can now put conditions. If you want the road to be wider, or any of that, now, right, is the time to do that. But again, I don't, they're saying what they're doing here, and there's four lots on this definitive plan. So again, if there's going to be changes, there, there has to be other, other proposals.
Yeah, and if you want me to clarify, I will, to the extent I can. One, we felt this was the, the most appropriate approach to be fully transparent, and not to have anyone try and accuse us of somehow trying to be duplicitous and do some kind of shell game where we're doing something where we're not actually telling people. We wanted to make that very clear, and we've made that clear from the start. Number two, as I see them, and I understand them, and I'm sure the staff can comment on this if they wish to, the comments and the level of scrutiny that Mr. Pesci has applied to this subdivision are the same as any other that's processed in the town, and this plan must meet all those requirements of the subdivision regulations and the State Subdivision Control Act, and we are fully willing to comply with that. Number three, if the board. Number three, if the Board wants to put some type of umbrella condition in that acknowledges the fact that we would have to come back with a further definitive or further preliminary and definitive plan for subsequent development, I'm sure we'd be glad to agree to some reasonable condition of that nature, because we know what our intent is. We're just availing ourselves of a right under the law that the Board's fully aware of. We have no intention of doing anything different. So we'd be glad to agree to some condition of that nature.
I'd like to say something.
All right, you can speak.
Yes, thanks.
Go ahead.
I wasn't in any way being accusatory.
Oh, not at all. I just wanted to clarify.
No, no, I understand.
Totally understand.
But I do think, I mean, one of the things I think is that the topo isn't as complete as it could be. It was taken off the GIS, so that's the basis for then, for the engineering drawings and so on. Now, I've done the exact same thing myself, but I don't know that it necessarily would be a lot of someone wanted to appeal it. I don't. We're supposed to get an on-the-ground topo, a new current topo. That'd be something that I would think is important. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't look, you know.
Right. I do have some suggestions as well.
Yeah, please.
Then my only other suggestion I had was, what about some kind of extension to Hinsdale? I don't know what our status, what the town's plan on doing with that later, but it seems like it would be nice to be able to get there for stuff.
Right. Hinsdale, just so the Board knows, on the east side, so the portion of Hinsdale behind NASHOP is not available for road purposes anymore. That's been taken by the town, and it's been dedicated to open space, or is in the process of being dedicated. So, but the western, the western side of Hinsdale, I think that is something I would recommend, and it doesn't necessarily mean, at minimum, some sort of an easement that's running through, I think, Lot 2, that would allow for the extension, if it's, if necessary. And Hinsdale in that, in that direction goes, would, again, go to the west, and then it'd be a possibility to connect to Milestone. But, but the eastern portion of Hinsdale, which goes and connects to Topood, is not available, just so the Board knows. But I think a connection from Lot 2 to the western corner is advisable.
Was there anything else you had?
I do think that the right-of-way, I think, and Dave, maybe I can't read this, is there an easement running alongside for, is that for, what's the easement that runs alongside the entire outline of the road?
10-foot electric?
Electric only.
Correct.
Because I think the right-of-way may, in fact, have to be bigger than 40 feet for that road. I know 40 feet is our minimum, but I think if it's extensively commercially developed, if there were, you know, a number of residences in here, you might need the extra room, so.
Yeah, we'd be glad to make that adjustment even now, if that makes the Board more comfortable.
Was there anything else you had, Andrew?
That's the main thing. I think that we would want to, in the final decision, have a discussion that would talk about the nature of the final development. Again, this is RCT2. This is why this is a problematic zoning district, because built out commercially, it's one thing; built out residentially, it's another; or built out as a mixture, there's even more issues. So, again, that's why we're trying to move away from it.
Board members, anything else?
I just have to act, because you've kind of already heard me in tone a little bit, but I have to act of the same sentiments as Andrew here. I mean, because, again, depending upon how you begin to construct this thing, it's really not only the connection to Hinsdale either, and what I'm about to say won't be a surprise, but there's also improvement still at South Road that we need to look at as well, too, in order, you know, depending upon the level and detail of what occur within this subdivision.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Board members, are we good here at this stage? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if anyone would like to step forward and comment on this at this juncture, I'll ask you to please just come to the microphone, identify yourself for the record. Okay. I don't see anyone doing that at this point.
What's our meeting in July, Andrew? 13th? I'll make a motion to hold till July 13th for further information.
Second. Motion's made in second and continue to July 13th. Discussion, hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously. Thank you. Okay, White Elephant LLC is continued, which brings us to 1415, which is Comcast, 1 Montemoy Road. And just for the record at this point, yes, I did sign an motion for the meeting, so I missed it last time, so thank you, Captain Bob West. Mr. Santos, are you ready to proceed, sir? How are you?
Good. Thank you for the record, Paul Santos, with the Antucket Surveyors. Sarah Alger, who is the attorney representing the applicant, is also with me tonight. Briefly, I hope, we'll be here. This is the Comcast proposal, which is essentially the final site plan with an appended full detailed landscaping plan that goes with it, which I believe you have a copy or duplicates of the Board here. I'm going to just.
This is the new site plan itself, and then the landscape, the detailed landscape plan, appended to it.
Essentially, the landscape plan is a supplement to our last meeting. In addition, I've also, to the best we can, closed up the entrance onto Montemoy Road, limited it from essentially a 60-plus wide opening to just under 40 feet in that, in that particular area. Again, the layout has the ability for cars to now back out completely on-site, work their way off of the site, and we've completely screened the Montemoy Road green space, closed off that entrance, and then completely screened the new access drive for the truck in and out of the utility vehicles that are utilized by Comcast also. So I think we've answered all the questions that the Board had and would, I guess, ask to close the meeting tonight if we could. I think there was, the issue was, the issue with the license was previously addressed. It has been authorized by the county commissioners for the access driveway, and be happy to answer any questions the Board may have.
Great. Go ahead.
And you're coming to the HDC, right?
Yes.
Because you have a lot of equipment facing Milestone Road. But otherwise, did you, we talked about this, and I was opposed to it before, closing in a little bit on that left side of the building, did you go any further than you did the last time?
Yes, I did. Yeah. I mean, it's the best I can do. It's not a lot, but it did close up. It's enough where it doesn't hinder the cars coming in and out.
And the area we're talking about is right here.
How much of that did it move?
And maybe 10 feet, even that.
But it did close it up a small amount, and it did give it the ability, remember, that's all now going to be curbed, so there'll be a complete curb there along Montemoy Road to discourage, or there will be, parking will be prohibited along that section. You'd have to jump the curb, and you're going to have the landscaping in there also.
Well, I'm still concerned about that again. I think the bulb, you see how it dips down towards the word "road"? If you follow the curb where it goes back around the round section?
Mm-hmm.
I think it's out too far. I'm out there all the time. I think it needs to be curved in a little bit less, you know, cut it back three feet. Still curve it, because you're going with the curb there, but I think it needs to be pulled back, because that number-one space is going to back out. It doesn't matter what we say. Practical use on that front parking lot at Comcast is a mess, but practical use is going to take that number, that first, particularly that number-one space, which is the one on the left, it's going to go back here, look, and just pull out. It can't. That curb is too far out. I think it needs to move back three or four feet. I was opposed to you extending it the last time. I'll live with a compromise, but I think it needs to pull back.
Well, the intent here is to change what is now occurring. I mean, the intent is to get cars off of Montemoy Road. It's to at least centralize and deal with the way cars are parking in front of the site, and the way this is laid out.
Is the cars that are in this parking lot, they're in here, they're going to come in here, this car now is going to end back out here and get out. It does not need, this will stop the cars from backing out of Montemoy Road, which is what we're hoping to do. This layout now functions with all cars backing this way and then working their way back out.
You're missing something here. If you're coming from Montemoy, you want to tell me how you're going to get into that space one?
You get into that space one, because you're on this side of the road, and you come in and you make that sweep, and this curb, whether it's three feet here or three feet there, has no effect on it.
Well, frankly, as you know, I've had a problem with this whole thing for a neighbor. I've had a problem with this whole shebang. I agree that something had to be regulated. I haven't changed my position all along. I've gotten a little more comfortable as we've moved along, but as you know, the last time, that was my sticking point, was pulling it any further forward than you have to. I understand the curb's going to go there to stop people from parking along the side of the road, because it's pretty messy a lot of times, especially in July 1, but I think the curb is too far out, and personally speaking, I'd like it pulled back, still curve like that with the curb, but I'd like it pulled back away from that number-one space and back it up three feet.
Linda, I'd be happy to pull it back three feet, four feet. I don't think it materially changes. What we're trying to do is just get as much of a screen on that side as we can. Three feet or four feet is not going to change. If it, if it's the Board's will, I'll pull it back three or four feet. But I'm telling you right now, I know what the cars are going to be able to do. I know what you say they're going to do, but they can, under this scenario, stay completely on the lot, back their way out and get out of there, but pulling it back two or three feet, I don't think is going to change the neighbor's thought of what this plan is now. This is our plan. This is what we want to go with, and I'm happy to pull that back three feet, three or four feet. It's not an issue, so.
That's the only thing I have to say.
Okay.
Any other board members want to comment on this?
Chairman, I'd call it.
Yeah?
Last meeting, I believe it was, I was very much interested in everything planning and acting of staff here with this board. And basically, I hate to see one department wait for another department to do something. And I said, I'd like to see a copy from the town authorizing passing across town property to get this property, and I would like to see it.
I'll let Sarah.
Mr. McLaughlin, we provided you with a copy of the lease at the last meeting. We have a bit of a chicken-and-egg thing happening here. The license has to have the plan attached to it. We can't finalize the license until we have a final plan. We can't get a final plan unless this Board acts, so I can't finalize the license without a final plan. We have the license. I provided a copy. It's been approved by the Selectmen, and all we're waiting for at this point.
That's what I wanted to see. That's why I hate to blow something I have a regret, and if something's broken before this Board, I'd like to see it.
But I provided you with a copy of the license at the last hearing.
Sign by the Board of Selectmen?
They haven't signed it yet, because we don't have a final plan yet.
Yeah, when you get a final plan, then bring it in.
The key to a final plan is we vote on it, John.
Right.
One department represents against you.
Well, I don't know that you're working against each other. I think what you could do is put a condition in the permit that we can't act until we've presented staff with a fully signed license. Specific, we can't defer to someone else acting, but we can certainly hold for the submission of the lease.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Could I just add, I believe through you, has, Town Council has approved the license as to form, isn't that right?
That's correct.
And the Board of Selectmen did vote in concept to grant it. It's just that it can't be finalized.
It just needs to be signed in the office.
Until this Board approves this final plan, which is, from your discussion, is still changing, potentially. So.
Well, so, hold on for a second. John, are you clear now about what has to happen here in order for all these wheels to mesh together? It's not that they're trying to be obstructionist or waiting on anything. There's just a very deliberate pattern that has to go, and I think you've heard staff represent at this point that both Town Council and Board of Selectmen are conceptually on board, and I would say the applicant here has a high degree of confidence in that, because I don't think they'd be before us tonight otherwise. So if that's a sticking point for you, I hear that, but I'm not sure how you're going to ever resolve it. We have got to do our job tonight.
Basically, I want to speak on.
Okay.
If, if we're going to approve something.
Yep.
We should approve it contingent upon the Selectmen having given the copy.
That's fine with me.
That I agree with. You say, they vote ready to sign it.
Right. Right, that's kind of the sequence of events that'll need to happen, so just, I just want you to be clear on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The fact of the matter, just to be clear, is that we can't, this permit is meaningless to us without that license, so we will get it, and I'm happy doing whatever I can to make you happy.
Good. Thank you. As one Board member, I have no doubts about that. Anything else from this Board? All right. The only thing I'm going to say to you is, I'm totally unbiased, one way or another, on the three or four feet. I liked what you did. If one Board member is feeling that passionate about it, well, I'm not sure what to say to you, but as far as I was concerned, one way or another, I'm pleased with what you did.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it doesn't materially change the design at all.
So it's, it's fine. I mean, I think it does, you know, it would basically go back to what we had.
And it's materially not that much of a move. That's what we had right there.
Right.
Basically going back to, with that scenario, and, you know, this is going to materially change, and it makes one happen.
Moving ahead. Moving right along.
I've never done that before.
I'll reserve comment. All right. Since the Board has nothing else to contribute, and staff, are you good at this stage? Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on this? Mr. Jensen, good evening.
Good evening. My name's Paul Jensen. I represent Direct Butter across the street and also the Montemoy Homeowners Association of about 20 residents. I'm sure the Board is aware, we've talked, Steve Cohen has talked about this, this is really not, you know, they have to make as much accommodation to the neighborhood. This isn't, this is a very limited grandfathered use that has been expanded illegally over time, and they're 85% of there, but we want to see as much screening as possible, and we're wondering how it's going to be enforced, the screening. And what we would have loved to have, and we've asked Council, we would love to see the plan in advance, so they can go out to the homeowners and everybody can say it's fine and dandy, but we have not, the first time we see it is right now, and we would, we would like to see as much screening. I would, I think we'd be happier if the curb is bigger, so they can't back out. We don't like backing out onto the street. It's unsafe. But as much as we can close down that 60 or 80-foot-wide area there and provide as much screening and the curb, we thank them for the curb, but we would like to see this continued so we can get the plan out and it be approved at the July meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'd prefer to close. I did provide the plan late this afternoon to Mr. Cohen. I didn't realize that Mr. Jensen was involved in this as well. It really is just a landscaping plan. It's the update of a prior landscaping plan that they have had for a long time. Really, the only thing that changed was this little entrance, and since we're changing it again, I'd just as soon do that through staff.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, at some point, we'd like to get this work actually done, and I know that we need to accommodate the neighbors. I think we have tried to do everything that we could to balance the neighborhood with the concerns that the Board has. It is an important site. It is the telephone, as you know. Television, Internet, everything for the entire island for Comcast, so, there you have it. And, of course, I fully expect that they will be at the HDC to ensure that additional screening or as much screening as possible is put into place.
Thanks for that. I get it a second time.
That's right.
Frankly, I think, you know, I was pretty opposed to this when it first started out a couple of months ago. But I think they have bent over backwards to accommodate the neighborhood. This predates probably 90% of the people in the neighborhood. It was there when they bought their homes. It was there when they built their homes. It's certainly, with this landscape plan, 90% better than it was. So I think they're bending over backwards to accommodate and regularize what a situation that has been a little chaotic for the last 35 years. So if there was anybody else to speak there, you know, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, that's what I'd like to find out at the moment. So is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to comment on this? Apparently not, so go ahead.
No, we've got one up there.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hi.
Hi.
Hit me, cut you off.
Laura McCloskey, I have three Comcast accounts. I suppose that's my disclosure. I've now sat through an hour's worth of discussions on this site because I've been attending for a different matter. And honestly, I feel that they've done a magnificent job in dealing with this. And I feel that while the neighbors have concerns, I think that the site could be approved as it is now. That would just be my recommendation of somebody that's sat through this for an hour.
Thanks.
You should get a vote.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing, none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve the application with that rounded curb being pulled back three feet.
Second. Motion's now made, the second?
Signed in the office.
Yes.
Oh, hang on, I'll add that. It's not, it's to be held in the office until we get a copy of the signed lease. It's not deferring action because we can't legally do that, but it's to hold it until the signed lease is turned in.
License.
License.
Thank you. Okay. Motion is now made in second. If you're all clear on the motion, is there any discussion? Hearing, none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Do you need me to repeat the motion?
I just needed to know who's second here.
I did.
No.
He did, yep. Any opposed? That's unanimous vote by this board, thank you. Okay, next thing before us. 2015, which is Paul M. Robinson, 21 Old South Road, for the applicant, Mr. Santos. I think you've got the next few coming up.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this. Thank you for the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, again, representing the applicant. With me tonight also, Sarah Alja, who is attorney for the applicant. Matt McKecon is also here, who is also the project architect. I think we have submitted an HDC package that was submitted this week, that was sent to you for informational purposes also. We're before you tonight for the development of a vacant piece of property at the corner of Amelia Drive and Old South Road. We've been before you a number of times now. And the plan that you see before you is the latest based on what we feel is comments that were received from the board, comments were received from the Butters. And we think does address all those issues that have been raised to date. Briefly to go through the current proposal and how it has changed since our first proposal is, we have now have a single building with one retail use. We have eliminated what we had previously defined as retail use B on the property. So we're now looking at a single user, which would be the market component. The project still has the residential component on the second floor, which is for two-bedroom units. The building has gone from approximately 5,000 square feet under the initial proposal to now, I believe, 4,339 square feet. So we had always been compliant with ground cover, but we have reduced the size of the building by reducing that retail B component. The application has also gone from initially asking for a waiver of open space. I think our initial application was a 22% open space where 30% was required in the MCD because it's an MCD filing. This plan that you see before you is compliant with the 30% open space. That open space takes into account the allowance for brick walkways, the green space around the perimeter of the building. And then we've incorporated some green space within the parking field also. The darker green is green space within the property limits. The lighter green is green space that exists outside of the property, but within the public right-of-way on Old South Road and within the private right-of-way on Amelia Drive. That area, although not included in the open space, is approximately 1,470 square feet of open land essentially associated with the property that the client would agree to maintain. The parking configuration is similar to what we had previously supplied. However, we've added the small island here and we've added an island here, which is essentially losing one parking space within the parking field. We have designated the parking as a two-way in and out along this, the Roberts property, which is Dr. Roberts' existing office. The property line is actually in this area here. We're utilizing a shared or common driveway, which many of the properties along the Amelia Drive subdivision do. However, this is a, once you're inside the parking field here, it is a one-way traffic flow in this direction. So two-way in and out for Dr. Roberts' existing spaces. Once you're in this area here, it's a one-way traffic flow outside of the particular project. We had previously designated an area for loading, previously designated an area for recycles and rubbish removal in this area. That's a completely fenced and screened area. We've designated an area here for the condenser units, which would be completely fenced and screened along the backside of the building. The market itself would essentially have a service entry here, a public entry at this point, and then two public entries off of Old South Road. We've connected the public entries off of Old South Road with direct walkways. We've connected the parking field here with a walkway and the entry here along here with a walkway. There are bike rack provisions along this side of the building here and along this side of the building here. We have removed what was designated as an outdoor patio in this particular area. That component has been removed from the plan. Have achieved a small area of open space in this vicinity here also. The submitter also now has a complete full landscaping plan, which details both the buffer plantings along the property to the south, the street trees. So we're talking about some white oak street trees along this area here, some flowering dogwoods along the front landscape of Old South Road, lower interior landscaping, two interior trees here along the side of the building here and within the parking field. And then a complete buffering along the Montomoy property to the south, which entails giant green aubivati, lower viburnum, and a complete screening along that area there. This area also has the screened fencing for the condenser area and also the recyclable and rubbish removal area there. It defines the walkways, defines the bike path, the bike racks, and then also provides a full landscape for the entire site. The application with regard to the initial filing to where we're at today, essentially now, we have eliminated the need for the open space waiver. We have provided the traffic component, which was a waiver requirement that we did discuss at the last meeting. So that leaves us with the one screening buffer waiver, which is supplemented by the landscaping plan of a 10-foot separation for parking lots over 20 spaces to a 5-foot separation along the southern property line there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have with regard to the revised plan.
Board members, any discussion? I do have a quick, few quick questions for you, Mr. Santos. I'm not sure if we ever discussed hours of operations, just to kind of get a sense of things. Think you said year-round is what it's for, and I got that.
It was six to eight, and that was in that operational narrative that we submitted, I think, at the last meeting.
Okay. And let me ask you a question. You're still doing retail A, retail B, right?
No, just, it's just the market at this point.
That's okay. I just, because I know that kept kind of going back and forth a little bit, thank you.
Right. So, no, it's just one single retail use, which will be the meat and fish market and then the four two-bedroom apartments on the second floor.
I'm going to digress for a few seconds, if you don't mind, because it really is an important issue. But Amelia Drive has been the bugaboo, I think, of the entire thing. And boy, I'll tell you, as one member of this board, I have wrestled with that. And if you don't believe it, Andrew will tell you, I've kind of picked his brain clean on this one. What doesn't fail me at all is that this is a private road still. And I think, as we talked about it, what I found very fascinating is that there is a deed restriction that's out there that talks about no parking on the street. The problem centers around the enforcement. And so, for me, as one member of this board, especially at the last meeting, to listen to the same people who have businesses on the street start complaining about some of the issues with the street, I'm a little surprised now to think they also have a right to be able to enact that enforcement as direct of Butters. And I'm kind of surprised that they feel like they're disempowered to do that. Now, I don't know why or who or how that happens, but it is happening. As one member of this board, I think this occurred before a lot of us even got on the board, this whole subdivision. But here we are today looking at it again. And we've also come to realization too, that there's also going to be some more development on it. And by the way, Mr. Santos, I'm awfully glad you brought up the thing about the bank at the last meeting. That was really a great thing to hear, that they would conceivably wind up doing that. But I think as one member of this board, what I'd like this board to do is to consider writing a letter to the county commissioners about Amelia Drive and either, and the letter should either do one of two things, either suggest strongly, in my first opinion, is to do a taking of this road. So it becomes a public roadway, and guess what? We regain control of how it's going to work. If the county commissioners aren't so inclined, the second thing I'm going to ask them to do is to consider at least making this a one-way roadway. Once and for all, let's just get it cleaned up. It's not working. I don't see people stepping up to the plate to do it. So as one member of this board, I'm challenged with how do we get there? And this seems to now be the only course of resolution I find. So that's just something I want to pro offer to this board tonight. Before we close the public hearing, I would really love you to consider getting ready as a board to send a letter off to the county commissioners to take one of those two courses of action. Thank you. Go ahead.
I suggested that the last meeting.
I heard you say it.
You heard me say it.
And now you hear me envoicing it again, yeah.
Because they don't have a homeowners association. They can't make one person responsible for cleaning up the whole street. But they have critical issues out there. And everybody that we permitted, because I know on the ZBA, we had to permit a couple, at least two of these buildings, if not three of them or four of them. And they were required to have the parking on-site. People just don't want to drive in the parking lots. They want to run and gun, especially places like Annie's, which is just surrounded by people parking on the street. You can't even get out of a driveway because so many people are out there on the street. So I think it does need to be resolved, whether the town takes it or they get a homeowners association and they can enforce the no parking on the street. But it was never laid out for parking on the street. You're dodging, cars come in both directions, you've got to find a driveway to pull into to let somebody pass you. What I expressed concern about at the last meeting was exacerbating the situation at the beginning of Amelia Drive. So the problem extends beyond the middle, which is where most of it is, not so much at the both ends right now. And I didn't want to create this same scenario at the very beginning of Amelia Drive, so it's the entire length of Amelia Drive. So what I think I brought up the last time was running, we don't have one, the full length on one side, is running a yellow line from the intersection all the way up to where you enter this parking area so people can clearly see that there is no parking there. And because it's a private road, they can put up a no parking sign through just the homeowners, the property owners. So that would be, as any part of a schematic here, I'd like to see the yellow line all the way up to the beginning with a no parking sign there. One or two no parking signs there and see if people will back off, because now we have it lined and now we got the signs. And maybe it'll keep them off the beginning part of that road. Because if they start parking on the street up that close to Old South Road, it's going to be a nightmare coming in and out of there. Because you won't be able to get out and nobody can get in while you're trying to get out. So it's going to snarl up traffic going both directions, trying to get in and out of there because there's not enough room to have parking up there and still get in and out of that road with two lanes. So my other concern was, we have to be very careful, forget the design elements above the footprint, because that comes to us at the HDC. But we have to be very careful because this will be the largest building from the Rotary all the way to Nobody Farm Road, that close to the road. Now, John Keans has multiple buildings. They're set up the same way, that close to the road, but they're multiple buildings with space. This is the largest building running across Old South Road that we've ever approved that close to Old South Road. So every effort should be made to screen, green space. I'm pleased with some of the changes that have been made. You may have to beef up the screening right now, it's an open dirt field. Did the building get smaller through that whole conversation? I didn't catch, how much square footage got pulled out of it?
5,000 to 43, sorry, no.
600 and change. And is that out of the length or just the massing?
Well, retail B was.
In the back.
Out in the back area. But there also was, the building was.
Shortened?
Shortened.
Yeah. Okay. How many feet does it go across now? Is it 80-something, Matt?
It's actually closer to 90. Closer to 90, yeah.
Okay. Because that's just, that's a big building running straight across the front of there. So I'm not, I don't know, being pulled further off the corner and the little patio coming off the corner, that makes it a little easier to absorb. So I'm just still processing, but I appreciate the changes to the parking and the flow traffic. So you can get out of Roberts without going through the parking lot. Because that was brought up the last time. Correct. So I think that's it for me right now, but I'm really concerned about the parking. I can't go into the competition with various businesses. I do think that the owners of this building really need to be mindful of their neighbors philosophically on that street and the other businesses there, because you don't want to kill an entire street either. And this is going to be open year-round? Because I know there was discussion originally that this was going to be seasonal. And I would have a lot of trouble going seasonal on a structure of that size in that location because you don't have any seasonal businesses anywhere from the Rotary all the way out. So I'd be really concerned about a building of that size being vacant and dark all winter. It's just not the area that that takes place, here on the island.
Hello, Sean Reedy. We haven't decided. When we went to the vineyard, we were planning on being seasonal, but the response we got from the community made us go year-round. So we, at this point, I guess, would be seasonal, but with the hope that we would be able to go year-round.
Well, that's, I'm not getting any comfort out of that at the moment.
Andrew, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question through you? Are the apartments seasonal, or will they be available for year-round?
Year-round.
I know you, you have a sort of a model where the commercial aspects of it can go year-round, but it gets pulled back. There's sort of a, you know, reduction? So it's open year-round, so it's not this humongous building vacant in a pla, in an area that's not vacant with any structure, any, any business is not vacant out there. But it would be a more.
Like a compact version?
A compact version.
We really haven't, we haven't really discussed that at all yet.
Okay. Just to know that that's a, that's a real concern for me, if it's that huge and that prominent, and it's vacant.
Okay.
We're giving a, you know, putting a lot of time into this, and all of a sudden, you're not here, so.
I, I have to say, I'm a little uncomfortable with the requirement that a business operate either seasonally or year-round. I'm struggling here to think of a permit where you have required that of a retail operation anywhere on the island.
We usually don't, but Sarah, this is the biggest, and this is in an area that we had, nobody is seasonal out here? It's just, it's just a hard concept for the big building.
I understand that. I'm just thinking that it may be beyond the purview of the board, to start getting into. I mean, hours of operation is one thing, but whether someone operates seasonally or year-round is quite, is quite another.
But I have to be comfortable giving, you know, voting in favor of this.
I mean, for example, there's a restaurant, I think, on Amelia that's not open year-round.
He's abandoning that anyway, but, so I don't know what's happening.
Well, then, I mean.
But I'm just, that's what I'm saying. It's a, it's, it's a big building, it's a big building, it's really close to the road, it's a departure for us from anything going out the road so far, until, you know, I don't know what's happening, you know, further out, things will change probably. But it's just, I've got to think about granting special permit relief in that area, given all the scope of the project. It's just, this is something that I've been wrestling with.
I understand, but I have to, have to agree with Sarah here, and I have to agree with staff. As, as one member of the board, I'd be very troubled.
Yeah, I know.
If somehow we're tying, we're, we're requesting now that we make determination on every application whether they're seasonal or year-round, and, boy, is that, that's a nasty can of worms.
Or did they not? ZBA did it.
Well, that's the ZBA, and good luck to them on the appeal, if it ever happens, because I think that'll be a real challenge in a court of law to have to deal with. The other thing I'm concerned with is us tracking into the size of a building as well and making a determination about its operational issues. Because here, again, that's, that's, that's something that I've never seen within the purview of a board beforehand. So, I, I can appreciate that, but I, I just don't think that is, as, as one member of this board, that, that's not a place I even want to track into, because I don't see how that's going to hold water in any way, shape, or form.
I don't even know how you'd enforce it, quite honestly.
Exactly. And, you know.
Except seasonal license versus year-round license, they did it to 21 federal when they first opened, you know, 25 years ago.
I was troubled by a then, too.
Assuming we get a liquor license, which I, I hope we do, but, you know, it's very possible we won't, in which case, I don't know.
Exactly. Okay. Is there anything else from the board?
Yeah, I have a few things.
Yes, please.
I've just got a couple things.
Yeah.
I think a couple of the people in this room would be happy if they were closed after the summer. The, the, as far as the parking, homeowners association issues versus enforcement, I mean, I just don't think we should be tracking towards enforcing as far as police, because then you get into the hiring, mid-islands, they'd be hiring more police, I mean, it turns into a town issue, you know? So I think that it would be nice if, if whatever the Amelia Drive people could get together, which they should have already been doing this anyway, way before this project, to figure out what the best efforts, the best thing is for Amelia Drive, whether it's widening it, making parking on one side, or whether it's enforcing no parking, or whether it's staggering it. I mean, there's a couple of different options, all one way. Seasonally one way, would be my thought. What do we, the only other thing that I wanted to bring up, Andrew brought up a different idea, and I think he's going to talk about it, as far as the parking lot, Paul, pulling out in a different place. I know you looked at that. You must have a reason that that's, that you've decided against it. Obviously, it would have already been on here. The pulling out in the middle.
Oh, God.
Remember he talked to you about that? Pulling out, sort of overweight, you had the, you know, I can't, I don't have a pointer.
Yeah, and what if I could, what?
You know what I'm talking about.
Absolutely, what they were talking about was actually creating a second.
Exit there.
Exit at this point here.
And picking up more parking spaces.
Picking up a couple parking spaces here, and letting a vehicle come in and then go out there. I mean, you'd have two entries fairly close together. I think you'd be far enough away from Amelia, I mean, I'm sorry, Old South. I don't necessarily have a problem. I think it can work, but I think what we wanted to at least come forward with was a plan that is compliant with the open space, because we heard about the open space, and you know, that's, I mean, I think if there's a trade-off here, you know, the reason I showed the, the area of green space outside of the property is that 1,400 or 1,500 square feet there was in the case of, if we did lose any open space here, is that, you know, in a sense, we still, we're still utilizing it. We still have a project that does have satisfactory open space. Personally, I mean, I'd rather not see that right there. I'd rather see, I'd rather see a space here than have a landscaped island for the purposes of meeting my 30% open space.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
So, I mean, it does, it can work, it would be a, it could be a right turn only out of the parking lot. What it would do is give us the ability to pick up, you know, essentially maybe two more parking spaces here. I think the plan right now is at 23 spaces. This would be 24. You potentially could have two more in that area, in that area right there.
It would also help for the delivery truck.
And then it could help with the delivery, that's right, because the delivery truck is kind of forced here to go this way, and it's probably, it's going to work its way that way, I know what it has to do going that way.
You're probably going to see the delivery truck using the bus stop, and that's just probably going to happen as well.
But, I mean, we did want to show a plan that's compliant, and I, I agree that I think it's, it's a, it's a, would be a good alternative here that wouldn't necessarily have an adverse impact on this entrance, wouldn't have an adverse impact on the intersection of Old, Old South Road either. I will say that, you know, with regard to the parking on the street, in regard to the parking on the site, I mean, the applicant does operate a similar facility, they know essentially what their demand is and what they've typically used, they're comfortable with the number of spaces that they have on this site, in that these spaces can service that, their facility, similar to the one that they have on Martha's Vineyard. But that is an option. It can be done, it would be a right turn out. We would have to at least, though, just fall below that 30% open space, but in turn, knowing what we'd, we'd, you know, agreeing to maintain that outer area in that area also.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem, Joe.
Paul, the, what's the 20-foot easement on the north, parallel to Amelia Drive?
When they did the subdivision for the entire park, they did an A&R plan for the first two lots. So the A&R plan set forth, throughout the entire subdivision, there's actually a deeded 10-foot easement to all the power company, all the utility companies. They didn't know what the road layout was going to look like at the time, so in anticipation of the road coming in, they basically, it was an A&R and an A&R with, with an open area that looked like a road but wasn't a road. They left a 20-foot grading, they left 20 feet there just to have for a grading, just in case they needed it. It's on a plan, but there's no specific deed for it. It's just a grading. It was a grading easement to protect, in case they needed it when they developed the subdivision.
Okay. One of the things I thought you might want to do, or I don't know if it makes any sense, was the minty green, that you, that's the town property, you could get a license for that and include it in your green space calculations, at least I would say that's okay. I know you meet them now, but if you have some other changes, you may not. Then the other thing, I was wondering if we, does the town want a 10-foot construction easement? A 10-foot construction easement for the town? Because at some point, if we ever take this, we.
It's a good idea. That is a good idea.
Would want a 10-foot construction easement going down the Amelia Drive, parallel to Amelia Drive, and maybe a 15-foot total, you know, a temporary 15 and a permanent 10-foot construction.
Yeah. There exists a 10, and the entire subdivision does have a 10, which, again, is deeded to all the utility companies.
Does it run in favor of the town?
No.
That would be looking for.
Yeah.
Suppose the town takes it?
Yeah.
It'd be nice there.
Sure, that'd be, yeah.
I kind of like, when you get it now.
We, yeah, right. Mr. Chairman, there's, there's, you know, we started getting Pulpus Road bike path easements way before it was, so when we needed it, it was there, so.
It's better to get it upfront instead of having to deal with it retroactively.
Just for clarification, you're talking about the 10-foot easement that is granted to the power company, so we would add the town into that if.
But it's not another 10-foot.
No, 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 no. No, no, same 10-foot, yeah. My last thing is that I actually think that Amelia needs to get widened, the whole length of, in locusts, at least eight feet, because it's going to be, it's going to be a mess there. Well, it could be four on four, it could be eight on one side.
Yeah, the walk is actually on the backside of the, on the bank property, the walk, I think, yeah, the walk is on the backside, you have green space on the, it's similar.
I pace, just spaces, eight feet to the back of the walk.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it would relieve a lot of, like, if you have, when your trucks want to unload, that would be the spot that they'd do it. If cars do park there, you'd have the same situation you have now, instead of, it's going to be blocked. It's going to be a mess at the intersection.
Yeah, typically caused, I mean, only because the nature of this, nothing really down here, but typically cars don't park down in this area. I think they, they stop in front of Paul's office here, up to his mailbox area there, I think, and then they park on the other side sometimes. But this area seems to stay, for whatever reason, that area seems to stay free. The bank has, you know, enough for people to come in and out, and this is vacant, you know, Paul has enough space here for his.
But it won't be vacant.
I know, so.
I mean, I, I can see people stopping with a little sidewalk, those, I mean, you know, stopping in and grabbing the six-pack, I mean, especially if the parking lot's full. And that's going to create a problem.
Well, yeah, Andrew.
Those are the lines of target.
Could I just, could I just ask for clarification? Paul, the existing curb-to-curb width is what again?
On Amelia?
Yeah, is it 23?
You said 23 last. It doesn't, 23, 24 doesn't make much difference.
Right, so if it, if it was a minimum of three 9-foot lanes, that's 27. So if, if the tree lawn between the sidewalk, is that four feet?
Approximately, yeah.
So if the, Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yeah, go ahead.
If the tree lawn was eliminated, that would get you to 27?
Yes. We don't own it. That's right, the light, the light green is, is, yeah.
So I'm just, I know, you said eight, Joe, is that what you're saying?
I think it should be eight total, but I mean, I would take what I could get, it's, it has to be wider there, it's just.
Right. So just, just for clarification, if there, there are three, so if it was two lanes of nine feet each, and then a parking lane of, or a loading, or just an offset of nine, does that, 27, does that get us there, or do you think an additional four is needed?
I don't know, what do you think, Paul?
Are we talking about Amelia Drive in general, or just this area here?
I think he's.
Are we talking about a plan for you to completely go down?
Well, we only have control of this. This is what's in front of us now.
Yeah.
This is all we can act on.
I think we're saying we can give up that light green area and turn that into wildlife.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's not, I mean, that can become, we could put this walk on the property, you know? I mean, we've got enough space here where you could still simulate what's happening there, the walkway could just come here, the trees could move in, I mean, that's a, that's 10 feet right there.
The walkway would line up, you'd have a walkway on the street.
So.
And not get a B-way in the road.
Yeah, but.
And right now, if the town takes it or something, it might have some B-way. But that walkway that you've got planned right now lines up with the other sidewalk going all the way down.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we'd present a problem down if that handicap ramp is right there, but.
This is not something we can solve here about widening the road right now, because we know that in the future, there is room to move stuff around through it.
Yeah. And then they need to be willing to grant easements to accommodate that, if that's the, if that's the long-range plan. Again, I mean, they're comfortable with the parking field that we're provided, you know, comfortable with no parking out in there, too. But again, they're, we're more than happy to grant that 10-foot, to grant enough easement rights here to accommodate, if there's an overall plan for Amelia Drive, then, then that's what would be done.
There's actually more space on the other side to actually widen the road as opposed to this side where everybody's going close to the street, the other side, it's going to be much further back.
Yeah.
I'm going to go to Carl, because he's, he has hand up for a bit. Are you done, Joe? I'm so sorry.
Well, yeah. Go ahead.
I'm going to have you wait, though, please, if you don't mind. Carl, go ahead, you have the floor.
And if I could say, too, I mean, I've got the plan for, that the bank basically prepared now, too, there's basically 18 spaces that are going to be over on the bank lot, which are community spaces for people on Amelia Drive.
At the risk of sounding strange, and I just need to ask this question, there's no way to exit on the eastern side of this property, is there the 10-foot right-of-way? You don't own it?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, okay. Got that out of the way.
Actually, I thought that.
Did you think? The other question was, can you move the condenser location to where the tree is on the other side of the service entrance, and then put the tree where the condensers are?
Yes. That's, that's our service entry back here. I don't see why it could. Yeah, I don't see why it couldn't be. I mean, I, I get your point on that one. You could put that over there, and then put the landscape on the other side. It's completely screened, it fenced. Yeah, I mean, you need enough, basically what you need there is enough room for the units and then airspace between the building.
Right. I was just thinking in terms of getting it a little farther away from the abutting property. Okay, well, that's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. Wolf.
To clarify what Linda said and what Joe was saying, two different things. I think I understand what Joe was trying to say, Paul. He's not trying to say we need to fix Amelia Drive with this application. He's trying to say, let's fix the spot with this application. So if, what Linda said, if that's an option, and you remove, move the bricks back, so that if there's a, a plan later, we, it allows for the widening to happen without changing what you've already put down on the ground, that's, that's one option. The other option is, other things that we were looking for you to do, whether it was sidewalks on the street towards Young's Way, may have to be, this may have to mitigate that, if we, if we had you move it back to make that spot work for a truck. That's the only, that's my, how I'm seeing this.
I would just as soon take that island out, it's that green thing. Paul?
The green space island, parking space.
Paul, I'd just as soon you take that green thing out.
What?
That long green one at the top.
Yeah, the long one.
That one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I personally.
Because that's, that's going to hamper the truck going.
Oh, no, I know it is, but I mean, personally, like I said, personally, I mean, there's, there's a balance here between, between what a, what a justifiable waiver is for the 30%, but, and I think it's important for the people in the audience to realize that, just because the 30% is there, there are options that we can come up with that are, the fact that the, the extra landscaping in this area, the extra street trees over here, more than offset the need for, for simply saying, you are now compliant, and we don't need a waiver to prop two green spaces in the middle, when I'm giving up parking spaces, and I'm, it's just, again, it's a compliant plan, but I'd like to see that gone, and that's gone, surely. And what I, do I think that asking for a 1% or 2% or 3% waiver is justified? Yes.[1777.83] or two percent, or three percent waiver is justified, yes, and we've got the green space over in that area too, so, I mean, I think that's the, the balance here that we have to do when we're laying the site out, I mean, I don't think, the thirty percent is a number that someone came up with at some point for an MCD, is twenty-eight percent better than thirty, not necessarily, as long as the plan is properly done and the landscape is there.
Well, here's the weird thing, if you're fourth, if you're three thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, you get twenty percent green space, if you're four thousand, you get thirty percent green space.
Well, the MCD still requires the thirty percent.
Yeah, I mean, it's ridiculous.
You know, so.
But it's arbitrary.
Yeah.
But I just assume that green thing go away, and here's one other thing, if you took that green thing out, and maybe got rid of that one space there, that would open that whole corner up to get out, not the one behind it, you know, on the Robert side, but the one on, where it says nine by twenty typical, on the land?
Yeah, yeah.
You get rid of that green space, get rid of that space, you know, just cut one space back, then everybody coming out of here, no matter how big a, a truck or car they can't drive in the summer, comes around that corner and they can make that corner real easy.
Oh, you're exactly right, the, the pinch point here is even for the, the truck coming out of here, it's tight coming out of here, you know, it, it's right.
So you take that space out, take that green thing out, we'll readjust whatever, and then everybody can, it's a pretty good shot going out, and I don't care if you take both those spaces out, frankly, but I think there's some ways to tweak this, but I think that the, right, for now, since nobody knows what's gonna happen later, when whoever does what with this road, but somebody, we need to start kicking that can down the street, but I'm satisfied with the ten-foot easement and that sidewalk staying exactly where it is, because it meets up with the other one, if you move this part, this sidewalk in any further on that ten-foot easement, you're gonna be dumping them in the middle where cars are, and they're not gonna expect you to come out on one side, back farther, and then come out on the other side on the sidewalk, up farther, so they're like this, they need to be this way, especially for handicap accessibility and everything else, so I'm okay where it is right now, knowing that in the future, something's gotta go. I'm not trying to solve it right this second.
Yeah, and I think the, the easement is an option that they, they've, they've at least agreed to grant the easement if that becomes a problem, and we don't know if it, you know, we, we don't anticipate it's gonna be a problem right now, by doing that work, we're essentially then creating a space, I mean, I think what we're talking about, Joe, is we're creating a space for cars to park there, correct? Or are we, are we creating a space where if the cars park, they have a place to go? I'm not sure.
I don't want anybody parking there.
Go ahead, let him answer, please.
What I would like to say is Amelia Drive, be eight feet wider. Now, how it's done, I don't too much care, but I mean, one of the things you could do is move the curb back to the, as a prep, and then.
Oh, I, I.
The walks, the walks would line up, that would get you four feet, and maybe go to the bank and ask them, they'll let you do that on that side, it's, it's gonna help that intersection, that's gonna be a mess there.
So, I understand what you're saying, you're just looking for, under this project to widen it, but not necessarily widening it so we can put cars there, that's what I'm trying to, we're not, the intent is not to have cars there by your widening, you're just trying to get the extra feet while we're working on this project.
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay, yeah, I understand.
Now, could it be, if you did it all on your side, maybe keep the first twenty feet by your driveway lined up with the one across?
Okay, I, no, I understand, I, I agree with you, I understand what you're saying, I didn't want it, didn't want it to try to imply that we're, we're doing that so we can then put more cars on Amelia Drive, you're just, because we're doing the work here, we have the ability to widen it, and we widen it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Mr. McLaughlin, I'm gonna let you go ahead, and then I'm gonna see about, I, I'm feeling like we're, we're tracking this applicant onto about four different directions, so, on the board here, in about two or three minutes when Mr. McLaughlin's got done, I'm gonna have you pull it in focus a little bit for this applicant, to give them some suggestions about where we're going, I think you've all heard each other's ideas, but I think it's time to pull it together as a board, and let's, let us as a majority be a little clear, at least on some of these issues, so Mr. McLaughlin?
I don't have one short comment, and to your reference, your mentioning on Amelia Drive, different avenues to approach.
Yep.
I agree with you a hundred percent, that should be looked into by the board, and for what can be best be done, but you've got a lot of good, good advice there, thank you.
Thank you, all right, so, board members, somehow I think the islands that got in here were also part of a discussion from our last meeting from the board, and here we are tonight, and we're kinda saying, well, yeah, no, maybe.
They hadn't pulled the building in yet.
Okay, right, so now you've got a much better sense of where we're at, so I'm just gonna ask each one of you individually, those two islands, you know what, you know what's gonna happen with their open space when you do it, all I wanna hear from you is, yes islands, no islands, Mr. McLaughlin?
No islands.
Thank you.
Nope, and take out a parking space so you can get around the corner.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Correct.
She didn't.
So on the islands that are in there, it decreases their open space a bit, but it gives them a lot more flexibility with parking, all I need to know is whether, tell this applicant whether they're gonna stay from this board or whether they're gonna go.
Yeah.
You want the islands in there?
Look into it.
Not look into it, it's either yes they're gonna stay, or no they're gonna go.
Do it.
Do what? How they're gonna stay, just make a decision.
I'd need to break down what, what I wanna say about it, so, definitely, say anything at this time.
All right, you're gonna pass.
Take them out.
Take them out.
Take them out.
I think you just heard from the entire board, take the islands out.
Okay, we appreciate that, and I would just like to say also too, that we are, the applicant is agreeable to, as part of the application, realigning and relocating that curb line as Commissioner Marklinger has asked for.
Okay, we're all good with the construction easement here, I hope, temporary construction easement.
But no, he's talking two different things now.
I'm not happy with it.
Yeah, we're, no, we're agreeable.
No, 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 I'm just asking you, are you, just, just stick with me for a minute, just follow my lead, are you all good with the construction easement?
Absolutely.
Good, everyone's happy with the idea of a construction easement, all right, I think we're having a problem about what we're trying to do with Amelia Drive, okay?
You can't solve it here.
And, and we're not gonna solve, you're absolutely right, we're not gonna solve it here, um, thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, for, for your vote of support for what I brought up, and, and I'm going to ask this board again, I, I, Andrew, can I ask you a question? In its current condition, twenty-three, twenty-four feet, if this were a clear road, it's, it's functional for two-way traffic, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's, okay, I want, I don't want eight different opinions from the board, I want, I just want staff to verify that, 'cause it's such an important issue at this moment, okay?
And, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, so at twenty-three feet, I mean, is the road striped in the middle?
No.
No, not, so, it could be eleven and a half foot lanes if it was striped in the middle, which is more than minimum.
Okay.
It, way more.
All right, I only wanted to do that with staff, just to get the professional opinion of what, what is functional out there, so, I'm just gonna put a offer to you one more time, I think the honest-to-God part of the situation is, we're all struggling with how to deal with how Amelia Drive functions, I'm hearing that from every board member, and I told you tonight how I felt when Linda said it at the last meeting, right, so, again, I'm gonna really encourage you guys to strongly think about sending that letter off to the county commissioners, I know staff will work with them, and I think the whole of Amelia Drive, Amelia Drive needs to be approached in a holistic sense, can't be, we, we're never gonna piecemeal this thing back together, so I think that may be the best opportunity to pursue here, and I would really love you guys to give that some serious thought tonight.
Are you suggesting that we would write the letter?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
Us.
Okay.
Us, it is coming.
I've been there, done that, and that didn't work out so great for me.
I'm sure, no, I think, I think we as a board have, have started to come to grips with that, and we as a board need to turn to our peers and put our best foot forward now to make that happen, that's my suggestion, okay? So, are you guys comfortable with that concept?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see cops walking up and down the street anytime soon, but I understand what you're trying to do.
All right, so, that'll be part of, I don't know how we'll churn that in the end, but I think you're hearing it, and I really want the public to hear, we're gonna try to tackle this piece.
And we'll certainly support you.
And I don't doubt that for a second, and I would hope the other business members who are on that street, now that they've heard where we're trying to track, will do the same thing, support it, so we can get the thing working once and for all, okay, great, was there, I think we covered all of the back and forth points.
I think so.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have, I guess, a suggestion for the board, or maybe for the applicant, I think, you know, whatever the process, which is probably gonna be multi-year to get Amelia Drive, I don't, you know, think the applicant should be held up by that if the board is moving in a direction, so, you know, in terms of reducing this to sort of mitigation-type measures, I think one of the things would be that the applicant would at minimum deed their interest in the road over to the town, or agree to do that.
Good idea.
They might provide some sort of estimate for the cost of relocating the curb, which wouldn't, the work wouldn't be done, but that, maybe that money would be set aside to move the curb, if that's what ultimately is decided, or could be put towards the taking plan that would have to be prepared for Amelia, but, it would be a percentage of the total cost, because again, I don't, there is, costs need to be shared by all the parties on that road, not just the last person here before us, so, if there was a percentage or something that could be worked up, we could put in a separate account, or, but I think you, you need to reduce this to what is your expectation for the applicant, and, you know, otherwise we're gonna be here for a long time, so.
I agree.
So that's just a suggestion, Will can.
And board members, hopefully you're good with that.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go along with it, but I actually think that widening it now is their percentage, it's the same as giving an estimate and getting money to do it later, I don't see, and I think now, that they're here, is a better time than later, but I'm, I will go along with your compromise, and it's a good idea.
My, my concern about.
All right, hold on, hold, he has the floor.
I was just gonna say, my concern about opening, widening it now, is that it will invite people to park there, which is the very thing we don't wanna have happen.
You can't do it until the whole road is done.
All right, I will see.
I hear you.
I know, okay, sorry.
Thank you, and thank you for working with us. Anything else from this board?
No.
Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your indulgence, the public hearing's now open at this point, if you'd like to comment, please step up to the microphone, identify yourself for the record, please, I see Mr. Jensen on the.
Paul Jensen, representing Annie's Whole Food Market, I would like to just say that I liken this to, well, let's say first, my major, I wanna refocus the board here, is that, you know, Amelia Drive's like an artery going through, and I'm worried about, we are worried about the front being plugged up by this development, and by plugged up, I mean, the main thing is that this type of development needs deliveries, and we all know when those deliveries come, they come with the boat, and if they don't provide a loading zone, or an easy, practical way for a truck to pull in, that truck is going to park, yellow line or not, on Amelia Drive, as close to the building as possible, so I would really encourage the board to focus on that for this use, and that's because it is a market, it's not just retail, or it need, you know, it's not just apartment building, it needs everything, as to the open space issue, I, I'm, I'm all, we're all for more parking, the problem on Amelia is parking and loading, last night, I drove down Amelia Drive at nine AM, at nine PM, there were still cars parked on Amelia Drive, these are people who work, live in the apartments, they park right on the road, private enforcement is not going to happen, because these people depend on it, I would say to you that there is another way to get more open space, the building can still get smaller, okay, it's, maybe it's not zoning that does it, but it is the product of open space, parking, loading, that really determines the size of a building you can build here, so we would encourage you to even shrink the building a little further, I think the applicant's made good, good progress, but it could be shrunken even further, I would think, and I, and just an aside, there needs to be more parking on Amelia Drive, people are gonna park on it because it is wide, I would hate to see that it just be widened to twenty-seven feet straight, would be nice if we left some trees and had two or three spots that people could pull and park, and then a, a little island that stuck out, so that you'd have that differing width to keep the speeds down and all those things, I, my client and I would agree that having two entrances in here would work, I would caution the board that that might make the plan harder to do one way down Amelia Drive, okay, you'd have to make the entrance in right away, and the entrance out the other direction, but it could be done, so, those are some of the issues that I see here, I think they're gonna talk, you guys haven't talked about venting yet for this building, how it's gonna be vented, you already know the Brotherhood's a problem, there are people who live nearby, so I would encourage you to look at that, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Yep, please.
Julie Rainamow, I don't have a whole lot of new things to.
Julie, can you step closer, please?
Certainly, certainly, um, it's sort of like Groundhog Day, I come in here and I have a plan in my hand, and then that one's different, so, I'm sorry for that, well, that's okay.
Can we, can we spare the back and forth?
Yes, sir, um, what Mr. Borchett said about moving the condensers, I would appreciate that, if that can happen, and also the venting, the kitchen, I believe, is on the back property towards mine, and I'm concerned about the smell, the noise, and if they're gonna be open at six AM, and those fans are gonna be going up on the rooftop, that's a concern of mine, the rest of it, it looks like, I'm not sure if you can tell me, but I think that the walkway has been removed from the eastern side?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you for that, um, the condensers and the ventilation are my really, really big concerns right now, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna let Mr. McKeckern respond about the venting, we, we don't, just so you know, do the sort of cooking that the Brotherhood does, so the, the food error, smells and aromas of frying and burgers is not something that we will have, but I will have Matt address that.
Please.
Quickly, also, I wanna note, we have four apartments ourselves, so we're gonna be very sensitive to, to smells as well.
Thank you.
So, the venting would happen in. Can I borrow your green pointer there? Basically, on this southeastern corner here, is where we're currently planning for it to be, you know, from an HDC perspective, the goal is to always try and screen it, or hide it from the, you know, most visible public way if we can, and where the kitchen is located, that would be the natural place to, to locate it, where it'd be the least visible, so, but having said that, you know, we have to be ten feet from the property line for the ventilation, and so we certainly will comply with that, and we're trying to get it as far off that property line as, as possible, but that is the current location where we would put it.
I think I said a little bit earlier, but not into the microphone, they don't have fryolators in here, the Brotherhood has a lot of fryolator capacity, it's the fryolators, having dealt with these restaurants at the ZBA for years and years and years with these vents, it's the fryolators that cause the problem, not an oven vent, you know, a stove top vent, power vents, that kind of stuff, it is the fryolators that cause the problems, and the HDC is gonna require them to be on the backside of the building, they have to be ten feet away, we're fooling around with these condensers, I can tell you right now, the HDC's probably gonna want those condensers not in the middle of the backside of that building.
Sure.
Just, can I just clarify one point, actually, I just spoke with Sean, one of the things we did do is part of the recent internal plan modifications, where we just eliminated retail unit B, the kitchen was able to expand, and based on some of the feedback we've gotten from the neighbors, we've actually been able to locate the exhaust more on this corner here, as opposed to the adjacent property line, so it's about as far away as we can possibly get, you know, to your point, Linda, I think, again, we've got our primary ridge line running this way, and so I think that the goal was to actually have it so that it's not visible, or minimize its visibility from Old South Road and Amelia Drive, but simultaneously addressing the neighbors' concerns, so we would be putting it in this quadrant right here, if that's clear.
Thank you, anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this? Are we not seeing anything at this point?
I'd make a motion to continue to develop maybe a draft, or. I'd make a motion to continue to develop maybe a draft, or a list of conditions, or something that we can actually all sit down and take a look at for hours, conditions, removing that parking space, you know, getting a little bit of better flow out, tweaking some of this stuff, get a little bit more nailed down, so we can actually approach a decision one way or the other. Because so far, we don't really have anything in front of us to, to digest, other than we're talking about the site plan.
Right. What, tell, can you be a little more specific what you're looking for, so I'm sure that I give it to you?
Obviously, the construction easement.
Okay.
However, you guys want to work out, Andrew, payment in lieu of moving the curb back, or however that's going to work, because we get, you know, we get that thing for the bike thing, and a lot of the other projects, the subdivisions...
Right.
Sort of like that.
Like a contrib, like a road, like a road widening contribution?
Yeah. Or a road improvement, or...
I think what you were talking about earlier, Andrew, is...
Yeah, whatever you're talking about.
Is that what you, is that what you all want, as opposed to some sort of actual widening?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because they've got to do it all at one time.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
There's one, there's...
I'm going to go along with it, fine.
All right.
I know.
And then get rid of the, you know, get rid of the islands, and sort of, and prove the truck flow out. Hours of operation, I just, you know, some of the standard stuff for these commercials?
I think I gave you that.
You did.
I just don't have it in a draft decision form, to actually look at it.
Okay. You want like a, all right, so you'd like sort of a draft decision with conditions in it, that condition it upon a script?
All the relief that you need, because you may need parking relief for one space, you know, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So, just nail it down more?
You want a grant of the roadway?
So, we can get...
Of our interest in the roadway?
Yeah. So, we can get closer to something that's actually palatable?
Construction easement, 10, 10 feet with a five-foot temporary, something like that? Or is it 10 feet enough?
10 feet, just 10 feet for me, for me.
I think, Andrew, just the construction thing she's asking about, you've had, I think you have a really good thought on that.
10 feet?
Just say it again, Sarah, please.
10 feet?
Yeah.
Or do you want 10 plus five temporary?
I'm fine with 10, period.
I think 10 is...
That's more than you're going to need, because the other guy's going to have to give 10, so 10 is fine.
Okay. And then some number on a road improvement contribution escrow or something?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
And a revised site plan, and whatever waiver at that point we think we might need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. So, that's your motion?
That's my motion, and that would, do you, do you want me to go to July 13th?
Yes.
Okay.
There's nothing sooner, is there?
No.
There isn't.
We're having a meeting every week, but not, not...
Just, just checking.
All right, so...
I have enough meetings in my life.
I'll second that motion. So, do you have any other things? The motion's now made, and second is the discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, have you unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much for that discussion, I think, although it's long, it's worthwhile.
It was healthy. Okay, next thing before us is 2115, which is 46 Surfside Road LLC, for the applicant.
I don't think we have any confirmation. Pesci's still waiting.
We had asked to continue that, Paul Santos from Nantucket Square, so, rather than hear from me again, we had asked to continue that till the next meeting.
That's kind of what I thought I heard. Okay, great, thank you.
Because you still have a lot of stuff with Pesci that's not on the table yet, right, Paul?
Yes.
All right, so...
I'll make a motion to continue 46 Surfside Road to July 13th.
Okay, do I hear a second? Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. 7824 Zeke Dog LLC subdivision, 31 Quinnett Road.
Like, that's the thing, the, the weird, the...
Moves that...
Is anyone here for that applicant? I...
Are you here for that?
I apologize, I thought you were still talking about 46 Surfside.
No, I'm sorry, John, I apologize.
Sorry about that, I was listening in the back. Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the applicant, John Brecher, representing Zeke Dog LLC, the subdivision of 31 Quinnett Road. To refresh your memory from last time, this is a three-lot subdivision, two of which are built, well, there is one roadway lot. One of the issues that we had at the last hearing was that we requested that, that the rear lot, or the southerly lot, be allowed to have two dwellings, and we have since sent you a letter requesting that we would be comfortable with having restriction, that there only be one dwelling unit per lot. Again, we would prefer to keep the driveway where, where it is currently located, and I, I think that was where, where we left things. I also provided aerials, so the board could have a better understanding of where the property is located.
Okay, board members, any questions?
Nope.
Just...
So, that's one per lot, John? Just one dwelling for lot A, one dwelling for lot B?
That is correct.
Okay, great.
And if, sort of leave the road meandering where it is?
Precisely.
Did we, I have one, oh, no.
Yeah, I got something too, but go ahead.
No. Did we solve the town layout issue, John?
I'm, I'm not sure that we have, but whatever we need to do with respects to license or can...
Andrew, do we, do we know what to do with this?
Yes.
This is sort of like a housekeeping, at least it's something we can fix.
We would ask the applicant to grant an easement, to leave the road in place at that particular location.
I think we'd be more than happy to do so.
Great.
Good. That's my only question.
Well, I have one.
Go ahead.
Why can't we relocate the drive, get it, right away?
Re- relocate the driveway in, in...
In the Quinnett Reserve Drive.
Again, I think, I think we're...
Relocate the road?
Yeah.
Good.
Oh.
Yeah, that's...
Okay.
That was done.
Okay, that's a good reason.
Anything else? Anything else?
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, if anyone would like to comment on this, Mr. Reed.
Thank you. I represent Robert Landreth, the owner of the adjacent property immediately to the west of this, which, as the staff report notes, is in the Log 3 district, whereas this is, is R-20, and we recognize that fact. In any event, we had initial concerns about, about that, and about the possible intensity of the subdivision using the layout of the road the way it is. However, we've had conversations with the applicant. The applicant has been very responsive, and in fact, as they indicated, they have given you a letter indicating that they are agreeable to having a single dwelling on each of the two lots. My client and I feel that that's very responsive, and on the basis of that, my client no longer has any objection, and the, and going forward on this basis is fine with, with him. As far as the layout of the road is concerned, with regard to the right-of-way, I understand the board's issue with that, but we really don't think in this location it's going to make any difference, and with the, with the secondary dwellings eliminated, we have no problem with that either.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Board members?
Bring...
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve with the easement in favor of the town, I guess, to leave the road where it is.
Mm-hmm.
And one dwelling unit per lot.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five-minute hold recess.
You know, following this goes, so, really bad. It's not, it's a, it's, it's just like the Eel Point issue with that, with that, those Anna lots, the same exact thing, you know?
All right.
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 This is okay, but you have to have a walkway or something between them. It can't be wide or anything.
I say that just the way it is, we can't, actually, they put one, two bars, they put an SDB and a, and then they have the, right now, there, and then they have a two pair of stairs. And so technically it works like this. About two, three, eight or five.
Technically, we have to. I know what else I know. But it's got a reasonable dimension.
It's about nine by twenty.
Yeah, or a seven by seven.
A seven, probably about two by, because this, I don't like that.
No, I know. This, oh, wider than twenty. So it's good right now. But yeah.
What's this? Enough of.
Smell down in the fire.
You know what thing I was thinking? So we can use the, it's not the same, you can do that, something if we have another meeting.
Use it for more sidewalk improvement.
Use it, use it.
I mean, twenty-eight feet wide, curb to curb, is enough for a parking space on one side of the road. Doing the bump out things? I didn't mean that when I said that. I hope that the.
We're gonna need just do it. Oh, that's new. That just came in. I just gotta wait for Andrew and, uh.
No, no. No, it's fine, except, except at the corner. That's the only thing. Yeah, 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 yeah. Rush. Yeah, no, no, no. Oh, absolutely, that's a good customer, that's a good customer. Yeah. Oh, well, this is something else.
Yeah, it just came in.
You guys just settled that? Yeah, 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 yeah. Catherine, good to go? Good, all right. All right, so, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for indulging us for those few moments. The next thing before us is zero four one five. This is Brotherhood of Thieves, an amendment on twenty-three Broad Street. Mr. Brecher.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Brecher, representing the applicant, Twenty-three Broad Street, LLC, doing business as the Brotherhood of Thieves. Um, at our, I won't revisit everything that we've done over the past, but just to confirm, um, I think there might be a misconception somewhere from the moving the staff memo or wherever, uh, the Brotherhood is only looking for an expansion of twenty seats on the patio. That is, not, not an additional sixty seats, just a total of eighty, so an expansion of twenty seats. Um, at the last hearing, we, uh, we, we really weren't able to, I mean, although they are two separate applications, uh, there is another application before us relative to the fans. Um, the applicant and the neighbors have been in contact during, since our last hearing, and I believe they have come to a resolution. Um, I have the owner of the Brotherhood, Larry Weldon, here to discuss the particulars, but just a brief synopsis would be that, um, the, the applicant is, I know this came in late, but we have proposed a landscaping plan, um, that is, now we have submitted to the board, it is just hand drawn for the time being. Um, and in doing so, we, the, the applicant is proposing to cover sixty of the seats with an awning, um, and sort of, in exchange for that, and I believe he has the neighborhood's support on that, in ex, in exchange for, um, he is committed to repairing the fans in the fall. Um, and in, in part of this, we would agree to certainly keep the, uh, the second application open, um, uh, relative to the MCD, uh, sort of enforcement, enforcement order, the action, however you want to describe it, but that we would keep that open until, um, sort of this fan issue is resolved, but that we would, but that would be able to resolve the patio expansion at this, at this time. But I'll let, uh, I'll let Larry give the particulars of the, of the patio expansion and the plan itself.
Uh, for the record, and for those of you who don't know me, I'm Larry Weldon. I'm, uh, the managing partner for, uh, the Brotherhood of Thieves Restaurant Management Group. I'm also, uh, one of the owners of the, uh, real estate under the Twenty-three Broad Street, LLC. Uh, I'd just like to correct just a couple of things. Since I've been back this winter, I've, uh, met with my neighbors, uh, I've heard their concerns, and I've actually witnessed, uh, the things that were concerning them. And as, without a doubt, there's some issues with our hood fans. Uh, I'm trying to, I'm gonna try to separate out the original reason why we came in, which was a twenty-seat expansion for our, uh, our patio, and the hood fan situation. The hood fan situation, I, uh, understood.
Mr. Weldon, that's, that's actually a separate thing that'll be before.
Okay, we'll talk.
I, I think we need to focus on the patio thing.
Okay, I thought they were joined at the hip, but.
Not, they're, they're not, and I, I have to be very clear, because in your, your letter as well, too, that came before us, as, as one member of this board, I was a little concerned that the way it was intoned in here was that if the patio gets taken care of, you'll fix the fans, and this is not a quid pro quo situation. These are two separate applications that are before us at this point. So I just.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, it's, it's in here.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I could read it to you verbatim, but it, it just kinda.
I wrote it, so I know what it says, so.
Right, and so I'm just saying to you, to just please understand, this is not a quid pro quo situation.
Yeah, and if you would please understand that I would like to explain that, and that's why I'm linking them together, that in no way did, I, I've spoken with my neighbors, and I've made it perfectly clear to them that regardless of whether you approve this patio or whether you don't approve the patio, I'm committed to fixing that situation, because no neighbor, neighborhood deserves to be, to have a hood fan situation. So if you read that into that, either I didn't do my job in making it clear to you that I was committed to do that, but my neighbors know that, and you can ask them, and they can stand up and tell you that. I'm pretty clear on what the issues are. I don't need a quid, quid pro quo. I don't need to, uh, 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 trade anything off or anything. I'm gonna, I, I came here to get twenty seats for our patio, it's been seven months, and I don't think that it's an unreasonable request. I've, I've had, lid has come down, and we've, I've, I've talked about it with about as many people as I can talk with about it, and I, uh, we're gonna fix the fans, and we'd like to have the, uh, the, uh, the twenty seats approved.
But is now technical, technical purposes or two separate applications? Right.
I didn't know that either, till I got here.
Let's just deal with the seats first. That's right.
Okay.
And that's. That's where Mr. Brecher should be, Mr. Brecher should be advising you on that.
I agree, we should keep these as separate as possible.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that was my whole thing.
Okay.
But it, it did say it in here, and I don't want to dwell on it any further. He has, he has. There's no reason for him to send two different letters, he just did it all in one time. Right, but, let's not go there.
So.
It's clarified.
It's clarified now.
It's clarified now, so thank you.
Okay. What would you, any other questions that you'd like to ask me? Like, I've lost my turn of thought, so.
Well, we were dealing with the patio specifically.
Okay. Okay. Would, would you like to know the history about why we even decided to do this? Does that matter?
I don't see any of my board members saying that we. No, okay.
Um, I have, it's true, I've been down there both for you and for Wendy.
All right.
Multiple times, trying to figure out the landscaping, the fencing, things like that. Um, I think one of our concerns was the impact from Broad Street, none, and my suggestion was that either they run the pergola over the top of it or run an awning over the top of it, because that, and then you're planting the trees, so I think it's gonna keep the noise as much as humanly possible, given the commercial nature of Broad Street, it's gonna keep the noise on the site. And I think that's what everybody was concerned about by adding another twenty seats, which is basically only five foretops. So, it's, it sounds like a lot of seats, but the twenty seats that you're adding are also further away from the property line where the residences are, and they're banged up against the back of what's now a two-story bookstore, so that keeps the sound on the lot. It's got a, a brand-new retaining wall between it and the Jared Coffin, so that keeps the sound from that direction. The Brotherhood itself keeps it, and the back and the, um, current building where the other seats are will block that, and if you add an awning, I think you're gonna be able to hear the Langforduck and those guys before you'll hear the guys from this one, because the, and, and, this is gonna be a substantial awning. So I am comfortable now with doing it, and if there's a problem, once they get this up and running after a full summer, and I don't think you're gonna do the, you're, when are you gonna do the awning?
We're done for this year. We're, it'll be up for next year.
But I would suggest that we revisit it, like we have a bunch of these other restaurants in the fall, after they have a full summer of operations with the awning, and let them go, and approve it.
I'm missing.
They're not adding the twenty seats right now, because it requires a patio and requires everything else. So for this summer, it's gonna be status quo.
Is what it is.
And is what it is, and then in the fall, they start the construction of the patio and get the awning and all that stuff, go through the HDC, and then they'll have a full summer of operation with the awning and the patio, and then that fall of sixteen, I guess, um, we revisit the issue.
Mm-huh.
And leave it alone, for now.
Well, I'm curious about what revisiting the issue means.
We do it a lot of times, Larry, especially in town, or when you're next to residential units, not just you, a bunch of other ones, where, especially like in Matticat, Matticat Millies, we revisit, um, just to make sure, sure that everybody's okay with what happened and everything's fine, and then it closes.
Okay, I wanted to make sure, now that I've cut my turn of thought back, that I make it clear for my benefit of my neighbors, that I have agreed that we're gonna put, and would like the option to put either an awning or, or an enclosure, a, a, a permanent enclosure over the existing patio. That is what we have, uh, a permit right now to have sixty seats on, okay?
Just to cover then, whether it's an awning.
We're gonna cover it. We'd like the option of doing one of the, I don't know if that has anything to do with the, come under the purview of the planning board or the HDC, but we'd like to do one or the other. And need to, we need some time to figure out is, the logistics, cost justification, and all that kind of stuff. The awning will probably do it, but it, it might be, uh, better, uh, for everybody and us to be able to put the, uh, the permanent structure on. And if you can remember, Barry, in two thousand and seven, we came before the board and asked for the same thing, and we got to a point where it, it all approved, and then some, it went wrong with the vote-taking and all that kind of stuff, and it, it sort of all went away. But that we're, sort of, following through in the same kind of thought, that if we cover that area, that's, it's gonna be the best thing to do. I'm sympathetic to the, to the noise, I don't, I think personally, it's gonna be, uh, twenty more people and probably two-thirds less, uh, noisy.
So just basically, to reiterate, it would be covered, whether by, whatever the HDC is.
That's right.
It's gonna be covered patio area.
Mm-huh, and I'm not, I'm comfortable that we'll probably get approval, because we do have already an approved awning, uh, from, from the planning board, we just didn't act on it.
Yep.
So we are gonna cover it. The, uh, I'll be perfectly frank with you, the pergola is def, is, as far as I'm concerned, decorative. I don't think a pergola is gonna, uh.
Some pretty.
Mitigate a whole lot of noise, but I don't think that it's an issue.
I'm done.
Go ahead.
I actually appreciate the tone of what you're cooperating with all the abutters and everything.
Mm-huh.
Um, that's what I took out of that letter.
Mm-huh.
That was very good. But I, the only thing I would like to see is if you could just get some kind of letter from an acoustic engineer saying that the awning will decrease the noise, or about where it will be, because I think if you did that, I, I wouldn't think we'd have to revisit it. If it is in fact two-thirds less, if someone that has the proper credentials says that, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. And I'm fine with the twenty seats also, but.
Okay. Anyone else on the board?
No, I'm, I'm, I've been at every one of these.
Yeah, that's fine, no.
Yeah.
Did, was there anything from staff, or did you have something that?
But the only thing I'd say is, Joe's request, I understand, but the MCD can be opened anytime, so even if, even if the, they found some, if there was another problem, it still could be open. So, like we did with the Westender, there were so many issues with the Westender that we had to put that in the decision.
Every year.
Because of the, you know, the, there was just a constant thing out there. In this particular case, I don't see, I don't know if we should have an acoustic professional or, I don't even know how you would do that, maybe that's easier than I think, but as far as the reopening or revisiting, that can happen anyway. We just bring that up so that the audience and the, and the people that live there understand that, that's all. So I'm good with exactly what, uh.
Okay.
Larry has said, and I really appreciate the same thing, and we appreciate working with the neighbors, Larry, and all of this, this is exactly what we need to have.
Just to.
So that's it.
I won't hold it up.
No, 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 I know.
But what I'm thinking is, if I was gonna be paying for an awning and put it up there, and someone could tell me what it was gonna do, then I would like to know that ahead of time, and I think that would be worth the expense to do that. But I, I would find, leave, that's your option, that's just my suggestion.
Yeah, we've gotta put something up and.
No, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Is there anything else from?
I'm good.
Any of the board members, staff, you all got it, moment? This is a public hearing, ladies and gentlemen, so if someone would like to comment on the application? Rhoda, good evening.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Rhoda Weinman, I represent the abutters, and, um, we appreciate Mr. Weldon offering to put the awning up, um, if, and we talked about quid pro quo with the other application, and that's totally separate, and we acknowledge that and appreciate that, but what we'd like to just make sure is that with the approval of the twenty seats, that there is a requirement that he does put the awning up, and so that that would be part of your decision. And with that, we're okay with it.
Great.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Just to comment.
Can I have a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm activating you on this.
Okay. Um, is the awning gonna be on the existing patio only and then a pergola on the new area if it's approved?
It's, it's.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Weldon, thank you for working with the neighbors on this.
I didn't hear what Larry said. Matt was talking.
Yeah.
What, what is the awning over? I didn't hear it, because I was, somebody was talking.
Existing.
Existing. Right.
Okay. Any further discussion on the issue to close the public hearing? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty seats with the provision of the awning over the sixty seats, is that what they're on it? Yeah, over the sixty.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for discussion.
Or, well, not an awning, Larry, a cover, because I know you have a hard-packed roof.
Yeah.
Yes, a cover over the sixty existing patio seats.
Yeah, there you go.
Not an awning.
All right. So, all right, we're back to where we were. Is there any further discussion? If you're all clear on the issue, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously. And that's it. Thank you. Okay, next thing before us is, we're just gonna watch right in phase two, which is sixteen fifteen, again, Brotherhood of Thieves of Twenty-three Broad Street. Uh, Rhoda?
Yes, good evening again for the.
Thank you.
Applicant, uh, for the, um, abutters, Rhoda Weinman. Um, so as Mr. Brecher mentioned, um, and Mr. Weldon mentioned, the, uh, neighbors have met with him, they've been in communication, there've been emails back and forth, he's shared with them what his plans are, we spoke, um, earlier this evening about what he, um, plans to do, and we're comfortable with what he plans to do. Um, he, uh, indicated that he expects to start the work sometime in, around September, um, which would be great, because that would give us an opportunity while he's still open to see whether it's working or not. So what we would like to do is ask that this, um, application stay open, so that this board still has jurisdiction over it. I understand we can reopen it, but I think it would just be easier to keep it open, so that we can extend it until the fall, and so that we can come back after he's done the work to make sure that it's working, that the odor is gone, that the fans are quiet. So that would be our request to you.
Okay.
Right.
Board members?
Yeah. You're okay with that, John? Andrew says that's.
Yep.
Good, okay.
Good.
Are you interested in knowing what we're doing and what progress?
We read it.
We read it.
I can't read it again.
It's good, Larry.
I know more about events than I wanna know.
You read it, thank you, thank you, it was good, it was detailed.
Very good.
Um, yeah, I know.
The question Rhoda just asked me was to make sure that it's in the record, that it is our intention to replace, not to repair. There, there is an existing fan that, uh, I found a company that, uh, came in and gave me a, a good evaluation of what the problem was. Uh, I'm very careful not to promise something that I can't deliver. I, so I asked her very clearly, this is the problem that we're having in the neighborhood, is this gonna get, well, let's do it. And he was very careful to say, uh, I'm almost positive that it's gonna, uh, fix the entire problem, but at the very least, it's gonna substantially improve it to the point where it shouldn't be a problem. So that's what I'm telling you about, that's what I think it is, I, you know, it's, there's new technology out there, the fan has to be made. It's coming out of Pennsylvania, it, it's the highest technology, and it's not his first day out, it's a company that's been doing a lot of work around Nantucket, actually, and so I have a great, a great degree, great deal of confidence in it. My plan is, is that I'm gonna order the equipment right now and have it here on the island. I'm not, it's gonna require a lot of changes, the electrical systems need to be changed, so they're gonna be done during the summertime, and the first window of opportunity I get in, in September, or, I say September, because I'd like to do it in September, I'd like to do it now, but I can't afford to be shut down if something goes wrong. So I need to pick that window of time as early in September as possible, get it done so that I have time while we're still busy to make sure that it's, we've nailed the problem. And if, if we haven't, then figure out where we go next. It's gonna require more than one fan, so.
I just have a quick question for you, between you and Rhoda. What, when would you want to continue, if you wanna leave this open, when do you want to continue it to? Just ballpark me in, because we're gonna need.
Our October meeting is the fifteenth.
Okay, good, you've already talked, good.
October fifteenth.
All right, just so we're all kind of on the same page.
If it's not done by then, we'll just put it to November.
Of course, we can continue it, easy enough, but it just gives us.
It's not a deadline, it's moves.
It's, it's a target date, just to start looking at.
Well, I'm gonna get it done as quickly as I can, so.
I have no doubt about that. Is, all right, so hold on for a minute, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to comment on this application? Okay.
Motion to continue to October fifteenth with the requisite, uh, Rhoda, with the requisite extensions granted, and the staff? Okay.
Second. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thanks for working with us and the neighbors.
Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Good job. All right, that's gonna bring us to our A and Rs at the moment. There are three A and R applications before us. Seven eight three seven, John A. Rondell Trust, seven eight four two, Douglas Woodyat's Island Family, and seven eight four three, Ann H. Parker. Did you guys wanna take the trust separately?
Andrew has stuff on that.
So, do I hear a motion to?
I'll make a motion to endorse seven eight four two, Douglas Woodyat Island Family, fifty-seven Washington Street, and seven eight four three, Ann Parker, five Bartlett Road, I don't know how that's supposed to work, but I'll make a motion to endorse both of those.
Great, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously, so seven eight three seven, John A. Rondell Trust.
I still don't understand this.
Mr. Chairman, I.
Yeah, go ahead.
I met with, um, uh, the attorney for the, uh, the applicant, and as, I think that it needs to be clear in the record that there is a condition that, that, um, matters here, which is the draft easement that's been, um, attached, so with that easement, I do, I, I'm comfortable that you, the board can.
Is that that piece right there?
Sign, yes. Um, so it's clear that there, there can't be any, um, closing of that, because it is narrower than we thought, the, the, the space between the buildings is quite tight, but again, with the easement, I'm comfortable now that, um, the board can sign it, but I want the record to reflect that there is a commitment to put that easement in place.
I just have a question. Is this at forty-one eighty-one oh?
Correct.
Is that predicated on the fact that the structures stay there?
No, the structures can be reconstructed.
With special permit relief?
Um.
Or by right? I'm just asking, because.
If they, if they meet the setbacks, uh, and the ground cover and the other provisions, they can be there by right.
I'm only, and the only reason I'm confused is because at the HDC right now, there is a request to demolish a structure that was damaged due to fire, and I thought that was this one.
Yeah, I believe it is.
And I just didn't want the chicken to come before the egg, or the egg come before the chicken, if they, if they demolish the structure before we do this. the chicken? If they, if they demolished the structure before we do this, then we got a problem. Because then it's gone, you don't have a 4181L.
Right. At this, at this moment, the structure is standing.
And they still intend to demolish it through us?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
The whole thing got me really concerned when it came to us first.
Understood. Yeah, yes, it's my understanding that they're, well, I think they were, I didn't think they thought through the 4181L when they applied for the demo permit.
Yeah, that's why I stopped it.
I think that's, that's right.
But they haven't applied for a building permit yet. It's just, but an HTC permission to demolish it is good for three years?
Yep.
So...
I just wanted everybody working on the project who didn't have a clue to know that that was the case. And you've since informed them that that's the case.
Yes, we have.
Is it still pending at where we are? Because it may not be able to be taken down, but that's a whole other ballgame. Okay. Then I'll make a motion to endorse with a condition, Andrew, that the easement remain impediment free? Is that where we want to go?
It's not really a condition. We don't really have the authority.
No, we don't on A and Rs.
But I think that it needs to be, we're endorsing, subject to the representation, that an easement will be placed on the front lot.
And be impediment free?
Correct.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks. Next thing before us, the second dwellings, there's two of them and we'll just take them separately because I know one was a little bit of an issue.
Why do we have an issue?
One issue. Yeah, one of them was an issue. Alice Rochat, 100 Low Beach Road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I said we should represent the owner. He had to leave the meeting. He asked that we continue it through the July.
I'll make a motion to continue Alice Rochat, secondary dwelling to July 13th.
Great. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously. And that thing is... Quateret LLC. You've all read the application.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the planning board, planning staff recommendation.
Okay, second to that?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously. Brings us to tertiary dwellings. This is a carryover from the last meeting. Lisa Tony, 5C Pine Tree Road, Unit 2.
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good. Beth Mayer for Lisa Tony.
Hi.
Hi. I'm her sister, actually. So missed the last meeting, apologies. Family thing came up. We are looking to apply for the great room to become a tertiary unit. And the two spots that are designated for Unit 2 were actually pre-existing prior to the tertiary, prior to, I think, the zoning change as well and then the tertiary ruling. So we have added, and I think Teddy King submitted a plan to provide an additional parking spot. Did he submit that today? Okay.
Go ahead.
And I talked, earlier I spoke to Beth, there's a few issues that, that need to be resolved. So I really, we're gonna have to get some answers between now and the July meeting.
Uh huh.
Basically, there's the parking, there's parking required by zoning and then parking required by their condo documents. So the, the one-bedroom unit that's there, which is Unit 1...
Right.
Is required by the condo documents to have two parking spots.
Okay.
Zoning would require it to have only one. The three-bedroom unit, which is Unit 2...
Right.
Well, that requires three parking spaces.
Okay.
And then the tertiary dwelling has to be a subset of Unit 2 in this case, because tertiary dwelling units can't be separately owned. They have to be with an owner-occupied unit.
Right.
So they can be, but that requires another parking spot. So...
Correct.
There's a total of six required, well, there's, there's five required under zoning, but there's six required under their condo documents.
Okay.
The other thing that we found out today is that, and we should caution you, is that there's some building code requirements that you really should investigate when it comes to condominiums, because there's different standards for two units versus three units. And it's something that I think you might want to investigate before you finalize this. So...
What do you mean? In terms of whether we're, we've got all the COs, you know, in terms of, and the part, and it was recorded with the two parking, two specific spots for parking?
Right.
For Unit 2 originally, so...
The CO, though, you should understand, is related to a duplex. So when you change it from a duplex to a three unit, there's requirements for sprinklers and some other things that you might want to just be careful with.
Did you look at the, I think I submitted the plan for the building as well. Do I need to check with Steve Butler?
Our building or our new, Tim Berry could help you with that.
Could see if it... Because you just updated the recently, I mean, between 2007 and now, there's a different requirement.
This is a building code requirement, not zoning.
Oh, building code, okay.
While you may be sort of okay under zoning, there may be some other issues that you just want to make sure that you're dealing with.
You can talk about that in the office, right?
Yes, thank you. Oh, yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to hold this to July 13th.
Did you have a question?
I had a question regarding parking, I guess, just if...
I don't want to do that here.
Okay.
I, I think you've heard from Andrew.
Okay.
You've got a series of issues that definitely need to be worked out. This is not gonna be a forum to work them out in.
Okay.
We're gonna be looking at certain things. So my suggestion is that you make an appointment with Andrew, you make an appointment with the building inspector, and begin to get those things wrapped around before you come back to us.
Okay.
Yeah. Would July 13th be satisfactory to come back to us?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, good.
I mean, that's fine. Thank you. Okay.
All right, so your motion is appropriate and it's a seconded.
Okay, thank you.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, I have unanimously. Okay. Next thing before us, 2105 Nantucket Properties, 140 and 42 Nobedear Farm Road.
I'll make a motion to hold that again.
Yeah, I agree. Because we need to have a policy...
I don't know where to, but just hold it.
Yeah, no, we need to have a policy discussion to get there.
I don't want to go over this again if you don't have an answer. It seems like it's every month or so. I'll take the motion back for just one second. We've been over this.
And, I will tell you, Mr. Bodett, it hasn't failed me because if you look further down on the agenda tonight, you'll see what's on there. It says, Paul, you see decision about MFOD units.
Okay, you gonna, you gonna have that discussion tonight?
No.
What?
We're going home before that happens.
You know, I, I gotta tell you guys, this has been hanging out there for a bit.
We know.
I think we've been incredibly patient, but there are also people waiting upon us as well, too, to get our act together.
All right, let's get, let's go.
All right, so...
So we'll just hold this for another discussion at the end of the meeting.
Well...
That directly affects you.
Well, no, I understand that. I understand, I mean, yeah, if you want to, you mean you'll hold this matter and not open it until the end of the meeting?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Let me, let's see where we can get to with the policy.
I'll make a motion to put this toward, with a discussion at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, okay. Just give us, it's just sequencing.
Well, we can take it out of order.
So, we're just gonna, we're gonna hold it aside, ladies and gentlemen, until we get to the polls, after the policy discussion. So 6842 Nantucket Westmore Farms LLC, Form J, Lot 22. You have a report for us there?
Yes, the Westmore thing.
What'd you do?
Right, Leslie completed the inspection and we recommend approval.
Did they approve, improve the road? Fix it up after the winter?
They did. There's one remaining item that involved the trench, which we're confident that's gonna get fixed, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Guys right there, you want to...
No.
Motion to endorse the Form J.
I'll make a motion to approve the Form J.
Andrew, I hear a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve Mashemmy Lane subdivision.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
I'll make a motion to sign the Form J, provided that the requisite funds be submitted prior and clear prior, prior to releasing the Form J.
Okay.
A second.
Motion's now made and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously. 7742 Philip Whitty.
Motion to approve the clarification.
Okay.
Correct, second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously.
Motion to approve White Hart Lane subdivision endorsement.
Where's that? I'll second it, but I can't think of where it is.
Boulevard.
Boulevard.
Oh, yeah.
Where?
Boulevard.
Is that 24 Boulevard?
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna accuse myself of that one.
All right, so noted. Okay.
All in favor?
Motion was made and seconded. Is there a discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, let the record reflect, that's 3 to 0 with Mr. Marcus, you're accusing. This brings us to 3613 17 Broad Street LLC, which is an extensive, extension request. This unfortunately was not anticipated. The chair or vice chair 48 hours in advance. Sarah, I'm just gonna let you take the lead. Please.
I, Sarah Altra for the applicant. I'm going to actually turn this over to our contractor to tell you where he is. This is a request for an extension of the prohibition against construction. Our construction prohibition started June 15.
Correct.
And I know under circumstances, you have allowed work to continue slightly beyond that.
To July 1.
That's our, that's our hope. But I wanted Scott Anderson, our contractor, to be able to give you an update on what he hopes to accomplish in that extension period.
Mr. Anderson, please.
Scott, Scott Anderson.
Hi.
There's just a few areas we have left that we need to waterproof and one of them, which is the elevator pit. We're on top of the roof now. We have the rubber roof completed and we just need to do that as well as another section of the existing building. This work does not require any hammering or loud noises or basically, you know, or blocking the street or anything of that matter. We'd also like permission to remove all the existing staging and site work. We were doing that and Marcus came down and said we couldn't work outside. So we'd just like to get the general area cleaned up for safety purposes and obviously make the town look better. There's a little small area that we'd like to backfill. It would take the scan of probably a couple hours. We could do that midday. It's not to block any traffic. We wouldn't be blocking any traffic or need any load, road closing permits for that. We'd like to reorganize the construction fencing to make the pedestrian walkway safer and make it wider, especially on North Water Street. General repairs to the existing building, we just want to make sure that's, we save that as best we can. It has some rot now. We just don't want it to get it any worse. We'd like to start these projects as soon as tomorrow. We could possibly have them wrapped up by the 28th to do that. There's one other thing that we request, lastly, other than this, which would, we'd like to finish the brick veneer outside, which does not block any sidewalks and there's no noise at all. Any mixing is done by hand, so on and so forth. I don't see any of that going past July 1st and we'd appreciate that extension from the board.
Okay.
That's my motion. July 1st, exterior construction.
Yep. Do I hear a second to that? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll put that on for ratification at the July meeting?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, too.
Okay, we're back to the thing.
Plan that's continued?
Yeah, the preliminary plan's continued. Dana Truxell, Sketch Plan, 157 Main Street.
There's no new information on that, is there?
Yeah. They are gonna continue, thank you.
Motion to continue July 13th.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, I have unanimously.
We're holding on that one also because it's part of the same discussion.
Yes, correct.
Warren articles, Andrew, quickly. Is this what you want, Andrew? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
As an outgrowth of our discussion to have earlier discussions about warrant articles, I want you all to start thinking about it earlier. I gave you a couple maps and these are some areas that we wanted to take a look at. The first one is expanding the R40 district around Grove Lane. As you know, that's an area that has a lot of wetlands and really isn't an area that could, should be supported for additional growth. There's R40 there now and extensive holdings, so this would be to look at maybe expanding that. The next map shows the RC district around the Mid-Island area. That's the district that we had originally identified for the commercial Mid-Island. We have not mapped that district yet, but we would like to move forward with that this year. The next map is an area of R1. R1 is supposed to be phased out and there's an area along Cliff Road near its intersection with North Water that is part of the HTC, old historic area.
Which map do you want now?
The third one.
Which is?
This one.
What about the HTC?
That's the area that you treat as part of the old historic consideration in your overlay?
You're talking about here, I think. You're talking about...
No, that's already ROH.
The area that's outlined is not ROH, it's R1.
Oh, up the Cliff Road, that's right, yep.
And the point is to match it to the opposite side of the street?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Except that those are much bigger lots with bigger houses. I don't think 50% ground cover is that big.
I deliberately ended it at a point where it's not larger and the characteristics of that, once we provide that, I think you'll see is consistent with ROH.
And what about, Andrew, oh, that's already ROH. There's a little piece beyond it, too.
The next map shows some outlier areas of RC2, which again, we need to be reducing. So Somerset, Somerset at Marble, which we had proposed in the past, Bartlett and Dimmock, which we're in discussions with the property owner. Knobbska Way is one of the outliers and then a small group of properties along Surfside.
Sea Tech allow dwellings?
Sea Tech does allow dwellings.
Okay, because every other house out there on Sea Tech on Bartlett has a dwelling. Stars live out there. It's sort of eclectic. There's a lot of dwellings in that strip, even though there's 10 ZBA approvals in there for commercial.
Right, Sea Tech's a possibility.
Okay.
You know, one thing I thought you sort of said was when we do these, we could do like a plus or minus number of units per...
Oh, we got that from town meeting.
Okay.
Believe me.
Well, no, no, I'm just saying as we, like, this one, when it's presented, is minus, minus five. This one's plus four and so on.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not sure that would have saved us a town meeting this year. The meanness was beyond believable.
The last map, I would like to focus in on the two fairgrounds, two to four fairgrounds and get that zoning straightened out.
That makes sense.
We've had different discussions about...
They're locking us in, guys.
All right. Continue, Andrew, I'm sorry.
We've had discussions about what, you know, the town might pursue here. And again, that's one of the last sort of big chunks of RC2.
I thought we already decided on that. Probably did something there. We never actually did it, though, did we?
And then, what you don't have, we want to at least put these out, is that for bylaw change, potential bylaw changes, Mid-Island, we want to look at a different height there.
Okay.
Above the 30 feet, maybe to 35. We're not talking about something completely drastic, but to get decent-sized third floors for apartments. The height definition is something that's been brought up, measuring all, at all these sides, that maybe there's a way to simplify that.
I think Arthur has a plan for that.
Okay. And then also, there was a height definition change from the last modification that we might want to look at for...
Flood plain?
In the flood plain, that you brought up, Joe. MCD, we've talked about, instead of having a one-size-fits-all, that we might sort of tailor that to some of the different commercial districts. Again, the downtown in MCD might be smaller than the current, but in industrial area might be larger. So again, we want to, we're trying to phase out these one-size... area might be larger. So again, we want to, we're trying to phase out these one-size, um, one-size-fits-all determinations and tailor it to the.
And then the CDT goes to the planning board.
The CDT is, right, something that, Linda, you brought up. And then also some changes to the tertiary dwelling, um, and the secondary lot, so there might be, um, consideration that the market rate unit could have a tertiary dwelling unit.
Mm-huh.
Under certain circumstances.
As opposed to the secondary dwelling, which they gave up, correct?
Should, yeah, should go up.
Okay.
So those are the ideas that we have for now. We're certainly open to ideas. It's very early in the process. If other people have ideas, we'd like to get them in.
Yep.
And if you had any issues with what we brought up, we'd like to hear them now.
Well, keep thinking of stuff because we're making a list. Count it twice.
So, board members, you kind of good with where staff would like to track to?
Yep.
Very nice.
Good. Alright, Andrew, I think you got a vote of approval for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And of course, the ones that didn't go forward, we're repackaging and bringing them back.
And this will be for annual, or are you gonna try to do anything for?
At this point, annual.
No.
No, okay.
Unless something happens with the forty B in passing.
No, that's fine. I'm just, I'm not looking for a lengthy explanation. Brief is good. Okay, thanks. Next thing is you had a letter from Luke Thornwell in here.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
Yep, I hope you all had an opportunity to look it over.
We've been talking about that for a while.
Uh, maybe we can invite him to one of our next meetings.
Well, one of the discussions at the HDC is that we start thinking about creating historic districts, and that would lend itself to zoning changes. Uh, in Old Quidnet, Old Mannequett, and, um, Old Wall Winnet. So we have a little bit more control over those important little pockets. It's not just town. There are little pockets of old historic structures, especially in Mannequett, and we need a little bit more, um, uh, ability to control that, and then that would lend itself to some zoning changes perhaps that would help what he's talking about.
Right. One concept I think we had a very brief discussion about is, instead of the sconset old historic, that we had a village old historic district.
And we just put it someplace?
That could be in some of the other pockets.
You could map it uniformly across areas.
Well, I don't know about changing the sconset in the town one, but I think creating a village for those outliers would be a great idea, and we'd support that.
I think I'd like to give staff the opportunity to try to draft it as a, as a uniform thing.
But we have to agree with that.
Pardon?
We would have to agree with those. That's, that's HDC jurisdiction. The zoning would be our jurisdiction. But we, whatever we call it, everybody needs, everybody agrees we need it.
I mean, is this sort of like an area plan for Quidnet in a sense, right, Andrew?
It is.
Sort of.
It is.
Short of them doing one.
Which is never gonna happen, aren't there?
No.
Mr. Chairman, can I just mention something about Mr. Thornwell's letter?
Yeah.
I, I've just been talking with him, um, not as an attorney, but because I'm moderator, he was asking me town meeting article type questions and things about coming here. It is a little bit like what you did in Mannequett, where the height.
Overlay.
There's an overlay and there, so there's a reduced height, um, maybe a pool, um, prohibition in the center of Quidnet, the way you have done in the old historic districts. Um, just some of the things that make Quidnet, Quidnet, trying to codify that in a way that kind of preserves that fishing village character without having it expand and blow up the way it has been, kind of down the Quidnet Road.
Yeah. I think that's great. We haven't paid a whole lot of attention, as you know, over decades in zoning, starting to any of these little outlying areas. Mannequett's had more focus than anybody else.
What did we do for Wall Winnet? We changed his owner, but that didn't change any. Do they still have, they can kind of build a thirty feet on like, uh, that little plebilly thing there in the back, all those small houses, that little village, is that called?
Crow's Nest.
Crow's Nest.
Right.
And they've been coming in and sacking us.
Yeah, I.
Go for it, Andrew.
Uh, we have, uh, in Quidnet, the R twenty district does not conform to the country overlay district. Um, so we have Village Residential, which is the closest cousin. That's what we implemented in Mannequett. That has the reduced height and has, um, roughly the same twenty thousand square foot. It does reduce the, the ground cover from twelve and a half to ten. Um, we, in Wall Winnet, we have R one zoning, which is also not compatible. We did an extensive rezone there from R one to LUG one. Um, and even along Squam, we changed, that used to be LUG one, uh, in the country, and that was changed to a combination of LUG two and LUG three in places. So we have done some work out there. What remains is kind of, what do we do with the core.
Wall Winnet proper.
Historic-y areas, and, um, you know, again, I don't, I, I will never support, I'm just gonna tell you right now, individualized, you know, we already have a lot of different zoning districts, so.
Correct.
I'm not gonna support sconset old historic and quidnet old historic and all this.
No.
It's, it's, Nathan is always saying we're running out of colors. You need to like, take a couple away, so, um, I think there's a way to do it, uh, you know, where there might be some special considerations in, in the various places, but I don't, I, you know, I, I, I don't support necessarily that specialized sconset district. Um, I think there's applications of that principle, you know, in a broader sense in other areas, and as Linda reminds us, the HDC has their own standards, which then even refine that even further.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking SOH, I was thinking the old historic district for us, that's what I was thinking of, as opposed to SOH and, and ROH. I was thinking about the sconset historic district, which would give us some teeth if things got changed.
Right.
And Wall Winnet would help, Mannequett, Old Mannequett would certainly be helped by giving it an actual historic district designation, as well as, the VN has helped us tremendously with the twenty-five feet VR. Unbelievable.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, I think we've, I think we've beat that, but are we good with trying to support, Andrew, with at least trying to develop the concept?
You betcha.
Yeah.
Alright.
And that's a fluffy thing. That might get us some votes for something else.
Because we would have to put the.
Don't count on it.
We would have to put the, um.
Alright.
The, the.
Now, you guys are really funny, because you were like, we gotta get out of here, okay? And now.
I agree.
Alright, so let's just, let's just.
Forty-one eighty-one, aye.
I just want us to take the time that we need here and stop trying to push things through and all the things we want to just dwell on it. So forty-one eighty-one, aye. Fayett Francis Peter and Coffin Streets.
Mr. Chairman, next week, the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The selectmen are having a, um, hearing to finalize these streets. They were never properly taken as public ways. I'd ask you to support, um, the, um, the taking of these ways and establishing them as public ways, as shown on the plan.
I'll make a motion to send a letter of support to the selectmen.
Yep.
I'm getting it right.
Whenever streets are laid out.
Wherever.
The planning board needs to, um, weigh in.
Yep. I'd send a letter of support for all, anything they want to take.
And I will say that this is not intruding on anyone's individual private property. We're following the roadlines as they exist, so.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, second to the letter?
Okay.
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor please say aye.
Signed by the chairman in the office, by the way.
Done. Okay, all in favor, ayes, so.
Aye.
Great.
Yep.
Okay, now we can have the discussion. Policy decision about MFOD units. Alright. And I think, as we had discussed about this, this is important, because this just doesn't extend to forty and forty-two, Nobodere Farm Road. It really extends, Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, almost a hundred and thirty units here?
Hundred and twenty, yes.
Okay, so it's, yeah, sorry, off by a few.
This is the only one that's coming so far.
Correct. But what you begin to do with one, you're gonna need to begin to do with all, is board.
Do we have an example of policy?
Ken, I made a recommendation to you a few months ago. Well, let me, let me refresh your memory at this point, was that, I mean, you, you realize what we did when we did this, and that people got a very special exemption for doing it. Alright, well, that's okay. So, the thought was, is to have them do, if they want, if they want it released, they're gonna have to do a contribution back. I want to channel the funding into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, um, and do this as a cost per square foot, per unit. So that way, it, it keeps, it keeps the idea intact of what we were trying to do with the MFOD, was affordable, okay? It puts it back into an organization that needs it, and like I said, it's, it's kept as a uniform basis by doing this on a cost per square foot of, of the, of whatever the unit is.
Is that the best way to do it, is just a bedroom, or?
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I was thinking, I mean, we're only gonna get that money when the units are sold.
Correct.
I was thinking we should also get money when they rent it out.
Because of a different type of rental, I think.
That would create a higher.
That, the, I. I, I hear you. It's just the administrative aspect of it.
No.
Or not the landlord.
I don't know.
But I think, I, that was my idea, because when they want to buy out from it.
No, no, I understand, I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I like your idea.
I like, I like. I like, I like Barry's idea as well.
Is that something that.
In that way, it's painless.
Andrew, do you just think you would have to.
What?
The square, per square foot, or just, just a flat rate per unit, or what?
Well, I think any of it is doable. I mean, the, uh, that's, I think, you know, that's a good reasonable formula. It's an objective, um, standard. You're not sort of.
Singling anyone out.
Or, or making it up on the fly. It's a, it's a formula and you apply it and.
And it's an, it's an equitable formula, essentially.
Right. I, the one thing I, I think, you know, that's happened since we started this, is we have had a report come out about workforce housing. Um, it did say that two-bedroom units are the highest need. Um, I don't think, you know, that, I mean, in a, in a way, you're allowing people to buy their way out of it, which may be okay if the funds are going, are meaningful enough to make a difference over the Affordable Housing Trust Fund side. But I don't think that a hundred percent of them should be allowed to be bought out. I think in general, um, the zoning was allowed, you know, two additional units were allowed here, and I know that may create some hardship for, you know, which units, but they may have to deal with that on their own. Um, I, you know, of all the times not to diminish options, I think, uh, we're there at that, at this point.
Mm-huh.
Yeah, right. So, um, tho- those are our staff thoughts on this, um, you know, that, I, I just think you need to be careful about this, because, um.
Is this something that's running out? Is that why? Or they're just asking for, are you just asking for relief? But is it, we're giving relief, or is it a condition that's expired?
You're giving relief. There's two, there's two reliefs that have to be given here. There has to be, the planning board has to give relief and the zoning board has to give relief because the, the multifamily overlay district is no longer.
Right.
Because the apartment uses are being, instead of an overlay district, they're being included in, um, actual zoning districts now, so.
So, why would we do it?
Well, that's up to you.
And there's, there's, there's the other thought for the board to consider is, this past town meeting really crystallized a lot of things that, that we need to seriously think about with the board laws. So the question becomes, do you even want to release them?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I really don't feel comfortable releasing them. I think we need to, I think we need to keep as many of these units for workforce housing as possible. That's just my opinion. I mean, I just, it's, it's getting really critical.
Yeah, I just, I just want the board to, I, before I open it up, I, I just want the board to think about that for a few moments' worth of time.
Well, some of the members weren't here when we were meeting this, so.
I know.
They should probably hear what, what the situation is.
But I think.
Have that inspection handled.
Right, but I think this board needs to at least entertain with how we're gonna deal with this.
Right, but he needs to study what the situation is, to see if there is a way to move, to see whether we're comfortable with that, because each one of these situations is going to be very particular, because either their finances changed, or they can move, or whatever. I mean, it's actually a little covenant house, because people had to get out of those.
Alright, but hang on for a second. Andrew, if they have to, if they have to move or sell the property, this was anticipated in the MFOD. How, so is that just, help me to understand what happens in that process.
Look, they have to find a buyer that meets the criteria. I mean, in this case, the bank is, I believe the, the woman that at least we were speaking to, and I don't know if that's your client or someone else.
She, she was the one who originally called me, but it, you know, it's really the association who's asked me to do this at this point.
But the bank is the one that had flagged, you know, the issue, that, that there's some restrictions here.
Yep.
And that these units aren't, you know, we didn't want to create more vacation rentals and high-end vacation rentals.
Yeah.
You know, and we are getting reports that that's what they're use, that's what they're being used for, and that's not why we allowed an increase in density. Not at all.
Go ahead.
Just to remind the board, these are not income restricted units. These are occupancy restricted units, so they have to be either year-round or peak season.
Right, so just. You know, if I, if I may, I mean, you know, just to clarify, there's no restriction on renting these at all. You can rent them to someone who's gonna work here seasonally. You can rent them to someone year-round. You can own it year-round. I think the only thing this does is, is restricts it from selling it to someone who is gonna come here and not work in the summer. That's what this does. In other words, just someone who comes to hang out. And, and, right? And, and, you know, and obviously, along with that, and you know, we've, we've already had the discussion about how the, the goal of the restriction was not to prevent weekly rentals, but that is also what it does. Um, and so, when we made this original application, you know, we had said, what the association's willing to do is, is prohibit that, i- if that helps at all. Um, and just so the board's clear, I mean, I appreciate you taking this on and talking about it. Uh, there isn't as much of a rush a- as there was, and I'm glad to hear you're, you know, you're talking about it from a policy standpoint as well. Um, you know, no, no one is under contract. When we originally filed this, which by the way, I think was, I want to say December or November, uh, that was the case. It's not the case anymore. So, um, you know, we're, we're, we're free to take our time, obviously, as you guys want to take your time and, and come up with a policy decision. But the reason I wanted to speak tonight is because I had actually submitted a letter. The last time I was here, Mr. Recker, you asked us to come up with a solution. I didn't know that you were talking, you were also talking about the square footage solution. I'd be interested to hear what, you know, what that actual cost would be, but what, what we had recommended is, uh, an amendment to the restriction that gives an owner an option. In other words, it doesn't change the restriction, other than giving them the option to, if they want it released, they have to pay one and a half percent of the purchase price to the Nanette Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So that, that was our, our possible solution, which I think is across the board fair. Um, I mean, you know, it might be better to do.
And then we go with the, if it gets resold, the one and a half percent gets paid again?
No, I don't think so. I think at that point, it would be, it would be.
Oh, well, I don't like that.
Yeah, because you'd be paying to get it.
Well, no, it would be, it would be a different kind of, uh, situation that, that's just part of it. I mean, that's.
Well, that's not, you know, I mean, that's a, that's a possibility too. No, I mean, I, I didn't think of that. Um, I was thinking of, and because when we originally requested, it was an outright release. Um, we heard the board's concerns, and then came back with an outright release, obviously, for, in exchange for, uh, that, that, that funding of the trust fund. Um, I'm just trying to, I guess, it's possible. You know, it's kind of like, it's almost like a rider for refusal.
No, it's like the land bank. I think it's palatable. I mean, I, I think it's easier if it comes to a town meeting.
So in other words.
I think it's easier if it comes to a town meeting to say, well, we're gonna get one and a half percent every time it turns over.
Keep getting it.
It's gonna generate some income for housing. I'm, I'm still not sure that I want to get rid of the housing, but.
Right.
Could I, just to be clear, so the one, so the, at the time of sale, if, if, if Could I, just to be clear, so the, at the time of sale, if the buyer was going to use it in conformance with the restriction, then they wouldn't have to pay the 1 and 1/2%?
That's right.
It would only be if they wanted to not follow the regulations.
Yeah, it'll be the seller paying the 1 and 1/2% either way. But, yeah, exactly. I mean, you know, and part of the problem, you know, when I originally talked, I did talk with Andrew and Leslie about this, and first came up with the idea of, say, a flat fee. And one of the problems I have with a flat fee is, you know, in talking to people in the industry, in the real estate brokerage industry, this is impossible to quantify. In other words, is it possibly more valuable that you can sell it to someone from Greenwich, Connecticut? Maybe. But the fact is, not a lot of people from Greenwich want to buy these houses, right? I mean, it happens, I'm sure. But it's unlikely to begin with, so the market kind of takes care of who owns these properties.
But, you know, I might challenge that a little bit, because if these things are being rented out, as staff is positive here, as vacation homes, there is a market there. It's happening.
That could be, yeah. I don't know.
So, I want to take a little caution with that, just to say, oh, they're from, you know, the people from Greenwich will never do it. Maybe the people from Greenwich won't do it, but someone has been doing it right now. And that is something that, again, I think, you know, I don't want to lose that tactic here as well, too. Go ahead.
And I think, I'm happy to hear that we have some more time.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, you know, if there was a way to maybe do this in a way that strengthens the language somehow, and I mean, I believe we created this, and, you know, we had a big discussion at a housing forum where, you know, and you heard some of this on Town Meeting, that, you know, the only way to do affordable housing is to have all these restrictions and everything else, and we have not taken that tack. We have created market rate unit, entry-level type market rate units. Anchor Village is part of the subset of this group, and there's others. And there's a huge need for housing at that level as well, so, that are above subsidy, but entry-level market, too. So, you know, maybe there is some improved mechanisms, some give and take, that might get us there. Right. So I'm relieved that we have a little more time. I'd like to actually do a little more research on the characteristics of the units that are out there, and who owns them, and what purpose they're serving right now. You know, we're going to need, we continue to need some more staff to help us with these things, but if we have some time, I would like to maybe look at that a little bit before you all decide.
No, I want to give them some time.
So we...
I don't think I even want to, I don't think it even needs that level.
Well, I've got a matter that probably has a deadline, that you have to continue.
And the zoning board is waiting, ready to hear...
Waiting for you guys, yeah. I mean, I think that's probably an easier decision for them. It's a lesser standard.
We can, yeah, that we can do. Go ahead. So the motion's made, the second... Okay. Is there any discussion on the issue? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Correct. Thanks. Thanks for giving us a little time, too.
Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Oh, are you the chairman when you're given to be the new chairman, or? Okay. I mean, who says, you know, "All in favor"? You get to say "all in favor" now.
I will, yes, all in favor, please say. I'm sorry.
Aye.
It's been a long night.
I'll second that.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Great. Thank you all. That sounds like a really good idea.
I'll second that.
Thanks, guys, everyone. Thanks for hanging tight.
Can you all sign one thing before we leave?
Yes.
Did she get that A and R signed? Because we're at the end of the town meeting.
Yeah, right.
A lot has spilled over, too. He tricked you.